Okay, it is Monday morning. Nine o'clock on August 14, 2017. My whole party members report to board. Say we have got our power of passing on the first day of this session. We do our invocation, so please stay in for that and may I stand.
Father, we thank you for this day that you have made. We rejoice in it, we're blessed with it. Pray your blessings upon all the families represented in this room today. Father, we've made a mess of your world. We have broken it from North Carolina to North Korea, from Charlottesville to Brazil. May this be the one place, this day on your planet, where people are treated, all people, with grace, kindness, forbearance. Father, even when we disagree today in this room, may we do so in your dignity. In his name we pray, amen.
United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one individual.
All right, let's begin with number one, recognition of minutes from July 24, 2017 to the county's administration. Sorry, but I should make you the page on July 24, and scroll to July 25. Number two, budget amendment to consider and act upon, approving a budget amendment for the 2016, 2017 fiscal year. Not the latest, you have an extra one added this morning. Should be laying on the table.
Is everything significant, Carrie, or just expecting to hear it? Just close yours.
Yes, we're anticipating it.
I make a motion that we approve the budget amendments as presented.
I have a motion, second, on failure, Judge, again. Vouchers. Two, consider enact upon approval of the payment vouchers processed by the county's office of free July 19, 2017, August 9. The check numbers, sorry. Check number 175951 through 176389. Wire transfers, 935394593, million one hundred eighty-six thousand nine hundred ninety-three dollars and seventy-one cents.
Will you approve the vouchers that the county judge and the legislation will use, now the twenty-three dollars six?
Second, for discussion. I have two questions, Judge. Carrie, page thirteen of forty-two, check number 176264. A city machine that wealthy in the amount of seventeen thousand five hundred storage boxes for cargo bay sheriff's office. Can you help educate the public about this?
There are storage boxes that we put in backboard carloads. And they were a lot cheaper to have them made than they were buy them commercial. But it's to store all the equipment that they got.
Okay, so not boxes anticipating for the move?
No, ma'am.
What grant would that fall under?
The Jack.
The Jack, okay. And I have one second question. Page twenty-four of forty-two. Check number 176372. Texas Kid Hiddle Center Psych Services, one thousand six hundred sixty-five. Was there an update on that contract? The last I knew, Judge, we were...
No, there's not an update yet. There's still going to be no data again. This is, this is for the doctor, correct? This is for the psychiatric doctor?
Yes.
The actual physician, the gentleman, okay, all right. But as it relates to the contract that's still open, we closed...
Yeah, it's still, it's still open. We're still going to...
We've sent the letter and it takes over the ninety days? Sixty?
Sixty. Just seems like nine.
Well, first one, just a clarification on vouchers. If anybody takes a look at them, and that's page five of forty-two. Check one seven six zero seven for the voyage fleet systems. Fuel for extension service of forty-one hundred ninety-six dollars. I asked about that. It's, it's a combination of both the fire department and extension. So it is, it's only two hundred something for extension. And the other question, this is our lectures. On page twenty-eight of forty-two is Southwest Airlines providing eighty dollars flights for Secretary of State. For the Secretary of State? Do we have to fly them here?
No, no, we flew to the Secretary of State's law conference.
Oh, okay. That's for them. And these are just a couple of savings. I don't know why the vouchers got to me this time. One, we've talked about very much in time about the car washes. And I think we do need to address that policy. The sheriff's office does do free car washes on Thursdays. And then the...
For everybody.
And then the other thing I want to... Question is, I know that the district judges have increased the amount that we pay our court of law charges. Is there a schedule for what those increases were?
It's actually followed with the Texas, Texas Department of Insurance Commission.
It seems like those, those bills this time have... I don't know how hard to find two to...
Gentlemen.
The car washes? Yes, we do use, we use Quick Rack for us. It comes out of our budgets, already in there, out of our vehicle maintenance fees. We don't have time to sit and wait. The sheriff's office comes first because it's his garage, and we understand that. But, you know, we don't have time to sit and wait. Me personally, I don't like convicts, that's around.
What happens is you go over there, and the sheriff will have his equipment lined up. We get in line, the sheriff's office goes to the front. And I've been there, and you think you're going to get your car washed when the sheriff's vehicles come in. It doesn't happen, and you can waste an entire afternoon and never gets car washed. Also, there's times, for whatever reason, people will get brought over to wash cars. And me in particular, I'm up on dirt roads, driveways, and I wash my car two to three times a week because it represents my emotional, represents a capital. And that's why I give over to you. Plus, it's loaded with firearms and everything else. You just can't, we have to stay with that vehicle because we have to...
Do you have a program where you can spend like fourteen ninety-five a month and get the whole month?
It's a key, it's a Quick Rack.
Yeah, I do what I do, I do it for a year, I live it for a year.
I buy mine like ten at a time because I don't wash as much as him. And most times I get fifteen or so out of it because Quick Rack, it's just going through, so.
I have one question on the, is there a gun belt purchased here for five hundred and something bucks?
Yep.
What, the gun belt? Does it include everything on it or just the belt?
No, it's entire belt. It's all sterbs, magazine pouch, handgun case, everything. Apparently, I guess, there was such a part of the belt. They're, they're very expensive. They're not...
Been public.
I like to use the P B.
Holsters usually on it, but...
No, no, holsters now are very expensive.
Going to walk to the...
Very expensive. No, he didn't help. He was retired, he retired, like, when he had a really poor condition. I'm bringing Richard Weathers on today, a deputy reserve costume. And as you know, he retired PD. You wore that thirty plus years, and it's just thoroughly beat up. So...
That's bigger, Richard.
So the last time you bought one, did it tie to your leg? So, Sheriff's Department, do you guys buy your own?
Yes, ma'am.
Y'all do? Do you other departments?
A PD furnishes everything but underwear and underwear.
Every department has all experts, all types, including fire.
I'm just curious, is there a wide difference in the constable from the sheriff's office?
Well, I guess, yes.
You have...
It all goes back to the government. Seems like we didn't have anything, but...
I can't speak for the constable report. I do have history.
Okay.
I can show you what I mean by wash.
Are you okay with girl wash thing then? I mean...
Well, it's in...
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you.
Anything else? I'm not sure, I understand it's all in the label, there's more to it. Did you write your name? Yes. Five, six, thank you. Number four, insurance report to recognize the insurance funding group reports. Uh, Judy, is there no change on that? Okay. By the way, Judy, thanks for stepping up. I just saw recognized. Number five, group insurance funding to consider enact upon a recommendation that the insurance advisory committee, if you say, would be insurance funding levels for these four years, seventeen eighteen, to play the plan design changes as presented to our current county, just unnecessary documents. Good morning. How is your boss? Good, hanging in there, okay? You'll be bright in the morning.
Thank you, she appreciates it.
Sure.
The insurance advisory committee met on August seventh. Would the county's very renewed for the given seventeen eighteen years. They reviewed, excuse me, a variety of changes and the impact those changes would have on the plan. There will be no changes in our premiums for dental, life, or vision insurance. They did make a recommendation to have a current plan change in our medical. In the packet, there's a detail of all items that were discussed. Not sure where it came, but you're going to get them. They consider making no plan changes at all, which would require six million eleven thousand four hundred eighty-one dollars in funding, which would leave a deficit of six hundred and forty thousand and fifty-one dollars. After reviewing and discussing various plan changes and funding options, it was unanimous decision of the insurance advisory committees to recommend a plan design change to include increasing the deductible from seven hundred and fifty dollars to a thousand to doctors, a thousand dollars. And increasing the emergency room copay from a hundred and fifty to three hundred dollars. These two changes will result in approximately a four percent reduction in funding requirements, with the funding to be carried fully by the county with no increase of premium to the employees.
Okay. And as you know, when we left it back in July, the amount was seven hundred and fifteen dollars per employee. Is that correct, Judy? And this brought it down to seventy-two dollars per employee. Right?
Correct. And this is behind Isner with TAC. If anybody has any questions for him, they can answer.
My understanding also that we had, it is going up, there's no doubt about it. It's off here, it's going up for everybody. But ours will not, Judy, this time because we had several college claims. Catastrophic.
That's part of it.
Okay.
And, and the fixed costs are, fixed costs are going up six percent. Yes, your expected claim, you're going up partially because of your stop loss claim, your high claimants. But a medical trend is somewhere around seven and a half, eight and a half, depending on who you talk about. So you're not too far from that, even with those high claims. But yes, unfortunately, you can expect medical costs to keep increasing each year, which is why we're recommending some of the changes that we did.
Okay, I think that, I'm sure Vaughn heard a question with ER thing.
It was answered, ma'am.
Oh, it was answered?
I was just concerned as well, the level of, basically, that this number of our employees you refer to, I have a mess up.
I might note, is that if someone goes to the ER and they are admitted to the hospital through the ER, that copay is waived. The ER copay is waived if they go in and are admitted to the hospital. So it's, if they're admitted. So if they just go to the ER and use the ER services, it leaves, and they would have the copay.
Well, I'd like this to discourage people from going to ER for routine things.
Yep, we're starting to see, and I'm sure you are seeing here, and Amara was talking to Judy about it, the pop-up emergency room.
Yeah.
And they can be misleading, and so that's, but that's happening everywhere. And you want your members to go to urgent care. You want to go to a primary care position and not go to urgent care and last resort is emergency to emergency.
So I had concern about to see all vowels and who begins with your primary care is not available. And can you speak to us a little bit about the pop-up emergency room after, or before, the affiliate with the, maybe, the hospital, or just...
Venture capitalists, they're not, they're not. Sometimes they're associated with a local hospital. Most times they're not. Again, they can be misleading. They say they accept all the major insurance companies, when that just means that they'll file a claim, they're not contracted.
So no regulations with that?
No, and, and if they're not connected and you're needing to be opened up, they're going to put you in an ambulance and take you to the hospital and treat you. So, you know, we're seeing this, we're seeing ER copay increases across the board, not just with TAC, I'm talking about, but as we look in the marketplace, in the marketplace, you're seeing ER copays range from about two to five hundred dollars, primarily to try to stop the practice and make people think twice before they'll go to a stand alone.
And our BSA urgent care, which is a network for us, has ten of their hours until midnight. There's a little bit.
Do you have a couple of questions? Judge, Carrie, I have a question just to help make sure my framework is correct before I, I have a couple of follow-up comments. So the deficit that we talked about at the very beginning of the introduction, that's what we had built into the budget, right? That's the amount where we ended the deficit late July, saying we felt like that was healthy based on what we expected to roll into fund balance, and we underspend typically, all that good stuff. So none of that has changed significantly. Is that correct? Okay. So my follow-up question on the recommendation of the plan design, I'm, I'm a little nervous for employees switching from seven fifty to a thousand deductible. In my experience in the healthcare industry, puts us in a high deductible company. I think I've heard, I don't know if this is correct, Judy, that we go back out to market, go back out to bid either next year or the year after. I'm a little nervous that once we make that switch, if we do move to a higher deductible plan, it's going to be very, very hard to come back down traditionally. It's very hard to adjust and to make up for that. What we talked about during the budget cycle was maybe not to have a constant living increase, but for the county to absorb this and keep the benefits the same. Our benefit package, I personally have been very proud of for our city and what we've been able to offer our employees. So I'm a little nervous about switching from seven fifty to a thousand just because I don't ever feel like we'll recover from that. The employees would recover from that. Is that a fair assessment?
Yes, I think that's a fair statement to say. We normally see plans increase or decrease the benefits. We don't seem to go in the other direction. So it is hard to go from a, you know, a thousand back to a five hundred or whatever.
That'd be part of the bidding factor, though, if somebody wants our business to bring it down to that seven fifty.
Absolutely, that's what, you know, as part of the standard proposal process, you know, our alternates are considered, and that's where you would...
We'll find that out.
A lot of times what happens, though, Commissioner, when it goes out to market, and please keep me in line on any of my statements that are incorrect, because they want to bid, and if whoever this they, right, whoever bids on this, they know we're looking obviously at deductible, those things matter to our employees. And if they're bidding that, they'll make up for those expenses in other ways. It might be that their specialty visit goes from twenty-five to fifty dollars, or seventy-five. Or it could be that ER moves from this one fifty to three hundred to maybe five hundred. They'll make up for the changes in other ways. So I think we have to be cautious once we make this change because it does move us into a different kind of bracket for our employees that I personally don't think we will ever recover. We won't ever come back down to our employees. Once we switch to a thousand, five years from now, I would be expecting this to go, well, maybe it should be fifteen hundred. It's something I'm proud of for our employees. But, but Judge, you're much closer to the employees on a day-to-day basis. I'm interested, has anyone heard that this is coming to court? What the recommendation is?
In my, in my experience, the ones that I'm going to talk to, and that's been Caroline's office, Judy's office, they were happy with the insurance the way it was. They would rather keep everything the same and, and although the health living adjustment, just to keep their insurance the same.
But you say the same.
But the ER step's not the same?
Right.
Or the deductible?
No, I was talking about the forms, yeah. I was talking about the form that y'all, the form that maybe changed everything. They were okay with that, but we've changed it now. That's a little different.
But that's just a recommendation, right? I mean, it's to us to discern if that's the right recommendation, and so...
But what I'm hearing you say, that they are not that comfortable with the current proposal that is being presented?
They don't know about it until a while.
Yeah, this is the first time we've seen that.
This is the first time I can hear about it right now because we haven't discussed it.
So we didn't float any...
Because it's not promoted, so we can't. We can't just tell the employees, this is what's coming down. We just tell them, yeah, another...
Do you have floating a half a total for that?
No.
Do you think that the, and I don't know timeline-wise, if what we're looking at, budget cycle, I personally think this is a very significant change for the employees. And I'll look to you, but you're much closer than I am. It may be worth floating that to the employees because if we're, once we get to the budget, I am Judge, and I don't know what you have planned, but once we get to the budget item, if we're looking at them giving a cola to offset this, well, we really didn't do any good at the end of the day, right? It's a wash. And if employees would rather have the, the plan design changes or plan the same, you know, I'm leaning on what, what we think is the right thing to do. Y'all are much closer, I don't want to speak for your employees.
My only concern is that we are in our open enrollment period now, and October one is our new plan.
We can't put it off too much.
But our meetings are set, and it only gives us one, two weeks. One week for meetings, the next week to get it all into the system if there are any changes for the nine fifteen payroll, because we pay month ahead for premiums, so the nine fifteen payroll deducts for the October.
So can we aggressively float that out there over the course of the next, uh, ten days and have some semblance of...
When this, when this, our meeting starts the twenty-first, our open enrollment meeting starts the twenty-first.
Of September.
And that's a week later than usual.
There's a week on next week.
And that's a week later than usual.
And knowing our employees at the county, I fully expect them to come and say, why weren't we doing it inside you? But they, they may not have had the information, to your point, Judge. I mean, our employees have typically taken their platform, as they should, and asked questions.
Let me just take a moment back, Julie. What do you think your, what do you think your staff would say if they knew about these cuts in the benefits?
Well, as far as like, you know, the business to the ER and then the extra deductible, I mean, we already hear the crunch of, you know, seven hundred and fifty dollars is a lot, you know, or a hundred and fifty dollars. And so I think when you're doubling the ER visit and then that increase on the deductible, I mean, it's going to be hard for them to get to.
You have to get the rest of the deductible.
I mean, my, my question is, so if, if we went back to the, if we went back just to the way it was, a hundred and fifty and a seven fifty, what's the overall?
Savings?
Yeah, I mean, what's the...
Two hundred and thirty-eight thousand if it's a back end.
But we have prepped for that, Judge, in the budget, knowing to keep it the same. Knowing the deficit, keeping it the same. When we entered the last budget, we were looking at the current tax rate, absorbing this, keeping it the same. If we do save the money, right, just kind of hold that. If we save the money and then give to our budget item and say, well, we need to give them a cola because now that, we didn't really save the money. Right, unless I misinterpret.
You're right.
But with all that being said, very grateful for the insurance.
Oh, yeah.
We have been on the other spectrum and working here back in the eighties when we didn't have to... So with, you know, we very, very grateful for what the county does for us. And we try to remind everybody that some years, you know, you don't, some years you don't get a raise. You know, and it's, I mean, it's just...
When I worked here the first time, I didn't pay your down for insurance, it was a cop. The county, the county.
I mean, it's...
You can get a cola of, say, like, two percent. A one-month always make thirty thousand dollars. Two percent is six hundred dollars. You know, and they have children, family, trying to go and absorb these extra costs. They wouldn't want it. I mean, if you were at a higher level and cola, you know, would cover it, I could see that. Then it would be really taxing.
So you're saying that they would not want the, oh, the...
Well, and the difference between it, it wouldn't add, it wouldn't add up, no. I mean, it would barely. If they get six hundred dollars and they had to pay two hundred and fifty dollars or more for one person to go to the emergency room, I mean, to get their deductible. With this, this is what, I mean, even with the cola, it's just... We're at the lower end of the level, you know? If you've got sixty thousand dollar person and they get a two percent, that's twelve hundred dollars.
I guess maybe you're more concerned as trying to make that, that grant and stuff.
I'd like some other committee members to stand up and, and support our recommendation. But let me just say, our committee was very seriously considering what the effect is on our taxpayers as well. Our insurance since 2012, it's down to sixty-two percent. Up the count of days towards spring. And who covers that? Who covers all of our, so that's the taxpayer. So that's what was part of what we were looking at. And when we looked at the, most of you don't have this sheet, we had several different options of things we could, we could look at to change. And one was to increase our drug copay. And that would have saved us the most. But we didn't take that. The second was the increase of the deductible, which we did consider. And then the third was, of course, the increase in ER copay. So I think we, we thought about all the employees. We want to be supportive of our employees. I think everybody said with their hands, that without our employees, we wouldn't have anything. And so hopefully our employees don't think we're trying to screw up because...
No, not at all.
With a sixty-two percent increase over five years, that's amazing.
And I probably think that the chances of getting any lucky drugs and stuff, I mean, I think to see that stay the same, as it is to the doctor, stay the same, overall outweighs, you know, your, your trips to the ER. I mean, hopefully we're not having to make a lot of trips to the ER. Nobody wants to go there.
Scott, what about, what about, do you have a large office? So tell me what you're, have you talked to your employees about?
I think that with respect to staff members, I would hear the same things Julie, if you're on that hearing. Obviously, lawyers are, they're a pirate, higher compensation level, so, you know, cola for them might actually cover the difference. But, yeah, we've got to be prepared last year. That's tough. Now, at the same time, you know, I'm, I'm happy to go back and counsel our people. Look, the idea is to stay out of the emergency room unless you absolutely have to go. It looks like you're going to get admitted, you're going to get admitted in that, that wave anyway. So I think the one that we, I would hear about most is the change in the cost. But I also understand where we're at. My wife, my wife works for a expedition, their package is nowhere near whatever it's...
It's not as good as I...
No, no, not at all.
Carrie, what about you? You have a large number of... Carrie, what about you? You have a large number of employees. What do you think they would think?
Well, I've already told you on that, it didn't look like everyone was getting raises because of the insurance package.
And what did they say?
They understood. I've got people that have worked at the county. They understand that we're taxpayer-based. I mean, we see those taxpayers coming in. Those taxpayers aren't getting increases either.
Yeah.
I mean, we've given COLAs a number of years, we're absorbing the insurance. We see taxpayers coming in that's not able to pay their taxes because of illnesses, because they don't pay insurance. I fully see both sides.
I do too. Carrie, what about you? You have a large number of employees.
I think I'm glad to go with what everybody else is saying. I mean, most of ours are the lower level. As far as salary wise, so it's going to be pretty tough on them. We did this. And unlike Scott, I mean, we can all go back and, you know, that, that's one of the things that we've discussed already with some part of it was that the ER boxes, stay away from those because they are very expensive. I mean, they charge an ER rate. So you've got to stay away from those if you're, you know, go to the critical care or the care express.
You're not managing the committee or anything else.
No, no.
I'm just trying to get a feel of the points and, and what, because they are, they are, they're not important. They are important and we do too.
Yeah, I'm on that committee and, you know, we're really studying this and it looks like to me, we, uh, we we need to write a bullet sometime, blow bill on the employees' contributions. And, uh, we looked over this thing. It took us quite a while to figure out what we want to do. We felt like this is the best benefit for all concerned, including our taxpayer.
I think, I was on the committee also, is that we struck with the fact that we're coming in this deficit. We're trying to do the best we could to do some kind of like everyone else does with their budget, to look at it, see if there's any savings that we can. Like you said, the first thing was obvious was what Commissioner Church said, was the increase in the copay of the production drives. But we realized that that was a huge impact greater than, you know, the others. So and I know there was discussion about, if you said that urgent care places, you know, that need to stay, to hold up the hundred, but we didn't want to do that impact. So our options, like Commissioner Church said, were very limited. And I understand, um, we, we couldn't even get on, like you said, we had a lot of discussion.
But Carrie, and I'll go back to the deficit, just to make sure I have it correct in my mind that I definitely don't want to mispeak incorrectly. The deficit that we ended our budget with, um, it sounds a little foreign to say, that's a healthy deficit because you don't ever want a deficit, right? You want to break, you know, what we know built in our budget, we do under spend and we do roll into fund balance. And so you help us discern during budget year to budget year, that's true. We can't recover from that deficit. Or that's kind of what we traditionally see. So my mental note when we left budget was, that's fairly typical. Um, we need to watch it. We, we spoke to all the departments and said, don't overspend, like stay good fiscal stewards and help us offset this. Is that still correct?
Yes.
Okay. Judge, I would make a motion that we, um, decline the recommendation of the insurance advisory committee and keep the insurance the same as current rate. What? Second? Do I need to restate that? You have a perplexed.
No, I'm just, no, I'm sorry.
That's just my look. Well, I know you're looking at, you're thinking through the motion in your head.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a second. Still there?
So, yeah.
I think the question is, if we go with the recommendation and lower the benefits, are we going to compensate the, the employee any differently than we had originally planned?
Then you didn't save any money in the budget and the process was a wash. And you made their benefits.
We saved, we saved some, but in the, in the, in the amount that the county is paying, we're one fifteen, so we do.
But the attachment of the base annuals, if I'm correct or wrong, I'm not getting out of here on the, uh, proposal for the increase of our COLA.
But Commissioner, if you're, if we're going into this saying, we want to offset the deficit of six hundred dollars, right? We want to offset that. We want to make plans, design changes to save two hundred and forty thousand. I know I'm saying the number correctly. We want to make the changes. This court approves that, right? Goes forward. And then we get down to our agenda item a little later and we said, well, let's give them a COLA because now they have these design changes. You didn't save any money. You go back into the deficit. Is that right, Carrie?
Yeah.
I was thinking we got to do a call.
That's, that's correct. But now we have, today, what we have in our budget at this moment is no COLA, keep their benefits the same. And we get to the budget agenda item and don't give a COLA and make their benefits worse than they are today, that's a tougher hit for them.
So Commissioner Kelly, say that again. Who, you said, who says?
Does it work on a different call?
That's correct. Yeah, that's, we might not.
Might not?
But you've not given them COLAs and you've changed their benefits.
Like I said before, sometimes you have to.
Yeah, no, I would disagree.
On behalf of everybody, not just the employees. That's my standard. What would be the difference between the one fifteen, would you kept the ER copay change? Is that one of the options that we looked at?
I think it was in there, Commissioner Church, because I remember asking Kay about that and said, we have the deductible and we just move the ER.
I would rather see, we'll go that, uh, keep the, uh, the, the, the ER to that update. But the man's the deductible at the current level.
Do we prefer to see the ER go up, ER visit go up and then keep the deductible the same?
Just the ER copay change is worth a one point six percent reduction. The deductible change from seven fifty to a thousand was worth two point five percent. What you have, as a self-funded plan, you have two things you're considering. Your fixed costs, which you're paying to us as the administrator for the admin fees and the stop-loss rate, the ag rates. And so your, your, your fixed cost is going up six percent, around forty-eight thousand dollars. And then as a self-funded plan, after you cover your fixed costs for the administration, now you're paying for your claims. Claims are going up twelve point six percent, um, in cost. That's some high-cost claimants in there. If that's just medical trend, what you would expect with exact same utilization this year, the next year's going to go up at least seven and a half percent. So your, your claims cost is going up twelve point six percent. That's seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars on a five million dollar plan. That's where your real exposure is. And so that's when the committee and Kay and Judy came to us to say, well, what changes do, you know, should we make? Well, then what we proposed were changes that really would impact the utilizers. I agree with RX copay. That hits everybody. Everybody's full on RX copay. And I agree, you shouldn't change the office of the copays. That impacts everybody. But not everybody's at the seven hundred and fifty dollar level. And those that are going to, um, exceed that is just a percentage of your group, not your whole group. And those are the people that are high utilizers. That's what's driving your claims cost. That's seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase. And then we also look at the ER copay again. Some of that could be legit. If it is, we, we'd like to send them to, you know, a different place than a standalone emergency facility. But we also want to try to discourage those from going and don't need to be going, have them redirected to urgent care. Those are some of the high-yield ladders that are, that are driving your seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar cost. That's why we focused on some of the copay changes or benefit changes that we recommended. I don't disagree with the argument at all that it's hard to go back. But you also, over time, don't want to be leveraged against. If you're just paying for the cost increases, um, then the employee is not taking on the addition and burden. And if their benefits stay as is, then they're paying less and less each year as you go. And so as a self-funded plan who's paying the claims cost, you have to, you know, I think you have to be responsible and consider those. I'm not, I'm saying that you should make all the changes that we recommended. We're just giving you some, some options. I think that what the insurance committee can come up with were some reasonable recommendations.
Yeah, I think a good point of clarification is historically, and I've been, um, a member of the commissioners' board now almost six years. Historically, we have cost shared, right? The employees have, have paid their component and us, we have paid their component. This year's been a little different because it was so much of a drastic change. But when they cost shared, we've traditionally taken the stance of, well, here's a small COLA, a one percent kind of thing. And so this budget cycle has been different. The theme was, well, maybe no COLA, but let's see if we can offset that and absorb it. So I appreciate your comments.
But traditionally over years, the county has not ever, well, seriously given any raises. It's always just a cost basis. It's not just, it's all it is to talk with the employee, we take care of the ongoing insurance. So there's not really, we've never really given raises.
I think part of that too, Judge, uh, when you look at the private sector, uh, typically how the raises are processed, right? Is every department has evaluations and you rate your employees and your top performers get this percent. And, and so we don't have a model like this in this county. So it's very hard without that policy to establish a good raise policy and then take that a step further, have a budget line item to support that. To say, you, leading this department, you know, here's your, here's your raises and, and go through your evaluation process and, and give accordingly. We don't have a process like this in the county. And that's pretty typical for government entities, unfortunately. Makes it, but makes us very different in the private sector.
Well, I'm, I'm, what Kay told me, she said we have four hundred and sixty-three employees on the program, on the, the package, about one thousand eighty-five lives, in other words, that have been covering families. And this is important to them, to have their families covered because, you know, some of them are very privileged that could have had to take it out of their costs. So, you know, I don't know. I don't, I don't know. I don't think there's a good answer or a bad answer.
So you're also, I suppose, uh, always a committee.
A committee? No, we're talking about that, you know? We're talking about that.
Yeah, that's, I think as a member of the committee, it's hard for me to back away from the recommendation, but without their opinion. And so I hate to not support the recommendation because but I do want to compromise.
Some, some of the problem was with the, with the whole committee too, and some of the issue was, is the cost to the, to the county, the, the taxpayers. And so we're trying to minimize that and, and let the employee absorb some of that cost in that the, the ER visits, a lot of them, a lot of folks just go to the ER because they don't have a doctor. Well, they need to get a doctor. We need to save that money if we can. There's no reason to go to the ER if you got a cold, if you got the sniffles or whatever. And I think we're seeing some of that. I don't, I don't know what that number is. But my idea, my thought was that we need to curb that. We need to stop the, the ER visits if we, if we, if we can and get yourself a primary care doctor and go to the doctor. That's what my thought was.
And Commissioner Vaughn, that goes back to your point was, well, what about if we take a hybrid of the recommendation, right? Leave the deductible the same, but offset the ER, one fifty to three hundred. And on this, you know, design changes, Doctor, Commissioner Church, I'll make sure I'm referencing the right one that you're on the committee here. That would save eighty-two thousand dollars. And that goes back to your point, keep people out of the ER, have them get a doctor so that they're not using the ER as their primary care.
We had, we had data in the pool that suggests to the point that your members, and this is using type pool data, all of the counties that are in there. If you have a member that is assigned to a primary care physician, they're seeing a primary care physician, they're twenty percent less than a member who does not have one. That makes a big hit on your total percent increase in expected claims if you can get all of your members to primary care physicians.
But with that said, what could be the purpose of no one having a primary care physician? I don't understand.
We don't, they just don't, I mean, this is just how educated you are about your healthcare options. Um, you would be surprised, Judge, I've been in healthcare for a long time. You would be surprised how many people come to just the hospital with their insurance card and say, what hospital am I supposed to go to? I mean, that's just, unless you're sick, and I'll pick on men here, unless men are sick, they don't come with a doctor. Uh, traditionally, right? There you go. I'm glad you go, but I mean, I just, I, I, I worked on the front lines of healthcare.
What did you say?
I guess I'm weird.
So I was a little bit odd.
I go all the time.
Good on you. Um, Judge, I'll follow up with the second motion if you'd like me to. And I'm echoing some feedback from Scott. So I would make a motion, make sure I'm listening to this right.
Oh, wait, wait. Wait for that. Add to the microphone.
Oh, yes, I said, mine.
I'm making sure everybody's quiet.
You're going to move whatever one else is saying.
I mean, all the comments.
Anybody else want to talk about it? Carrie?
I have a suggestion. I know we've got opening moment and y'all said that you don't have to go unless there's changes. Do we not need to have some vague classes with these people that are using the ER instead of the doctor? A lot of people just don't know what the process is. And they don't go until they do have, they get sick and they're, oh, I need to go so I can be at work tomorrow. Can we not maybe pre-plan this and?
I think that's.
You know, educate them that, look, don't be going to the box ERs. They not only are costing you, but they're costing us.
The only thing is the time crunch. And a little, a little bit of understanding right now, so we're trying to get this done.
But even after open enrollment though, if we can set up some classes.
Oh, after all, okay.
And make it mandatory.
We have literature, we have literature that we can provide to Judy. They can include the.
We usually put it in the package to get people to agree to.
Well, she may be asking us to, I'm basically asking to force our employees to go to these.
And I think that's an idea, walking into.
We considered maybe inviting some GPs to our meetings to make these customer.
Bring the doctors. That's a different strategy.
Well, there are, there are some programs that we also have that, that do biometrics. And as part of the biometrics, there's an expert practitioner that counsels the member right here onsite about their biometrics that also helps them locate a primary care physician if they don't have one because that's part of the conversation. So there's, there's literature that we can help provide the county to include, whether it's enrollment or other things. And there's some different programs that we have that can help encourage with that as well, that we can make sure that we're working with Judy and Casey.
When, in regard to your, to your, uh, idea, Mr. Kelly? If Dr. McGurk shows up, we're. The other way.
Oh, really?
Okay.
The big names on the show.
Okay. Okay. So I need a, I need a motion. I'll let.
All right. Hope I don't be killed by our meetings. I will move that we accept the, uh, insurance, group insurance, only a lot of work for the seventeen eighteen to include the change. That we increase ER copay at one fifty-three, savings of eighty-two thousand, so we're going to call it a change.
Okay, that's it? Just that one change, just that one change? Okay. A motion and a second? Um, favor by your right hand? All posts. Hold the one. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Um, number six, Sheriff and Hospital Feats. We did this last time, but I think we don't address it again today. Okay, we have that right now. Okay, so considering I've. Okay, so consider, I'm studying and reading the sheriff and constable page of civil processes. Page one, one twenty-eight.
And what's here on campus, because I was going to be commissioning first. He's going to address what changes.
What we're asking for is the writ of attachment. It's $75 plus traditionally 60 cents a mile travel outside Potter County. What's occurring is there an attorney out in Houston, who gives them orders throughout the state to their attorneys. And what they've discovered is that they can send a writ of attachment for the body, take the body before the court in a civil manner, where maybe the person hasn't shown up or determine what assets he has or whatever, and go get that attachment issued by the court. And they will send that to wherever this person is residing. So, let's say that this judgment may be occurring in Houston. They'll send that to Amarillo, pre-pan. And once you receive it, you're on the hook to execute. All right, so then you're stuck. You have to go out and get this guy and whatever time that may be. And then you're stuck having to transport him to Houston to take him before the bench. And you cannot be able to do that. If you do, then you're similarly responsible if you sue. And this attorney does recommend that they sue constable sheriffs or whatever. And this is an attempt to try to avoid that from happening. And apparently, it has been happening with some, not a lot, with some judiciary. And that's what we're trying to address.
It basically keeps us from having to take the body to Houston and sit there for three or four days on a $150 fee. And that's all we would get to sit there with that body. And with this.
Is this body?
A live body. You can turn that attorney or some of his other attorney friends that, you know, hey, if you want to do this, you're going to have to pay for it. If you discover in the county.
Was this $150 an additional?
It's $150 for the first day and then $75 every day after that. And then 60 cents a mile travel outside the county. I mean, that's your debt.
Because even the worst case scenario, you could take the place. And I've had it happen mostly. And the court is not in session, you have no judge. Well, you're going to have to lodge that person in the county jail. And then as soon as court is open, you have to go back and get him. So, you could make a run to Dallas, Houston, or wherever. And then you're going to have to lodge him. You're going to want to stand overnight, bring that person back before the bench. I mean, it just gets ugly.
What used to happen is you got a guy in Amarillo, you take him out of Potter County, you use him to get, well, this attorney has found a loophole where, no, you're going to bring him to us.
Well, when you bet, that happened.
Rips, body attachments are not real common, but they do occur. And it just depends on how aggressive your attorneys are. Some are more aggressive than others. And if the person has assets and they think they're trying to hide those assets, no issues. And then you have to bring that person before the court so that they can give testimony to the court regarding whatever question that attorney had.
If their attorneys don't care, you know, they're liable to sue counties or cities. They can find a loophole and they can get away to suing somebody. That's what they're coming to do.
So, the current rate today is 150, you're just at, and that's it. And you're on the writ of attachment, you're asking to include the $75 each additional day and 60 cents of the travel per month.
It's just, it's really, it's a big county. I mean, some attorney decides to go, I do 10 or 12 rips of attachments during school year. They're all local and they're all two.
They're all over town.
Most, what we're being told in constable schools is to make these changes and you tell all counties to do this because this is happening.
And are you also, is the change on the writ of possession?
The writ of possession is, we get rips. And we try to schedule for two hours, but some rips will go on for hours. And.
And that change was already made, but if the wording was any writ and it should just be the writ of possession, it's the only writ that's $50 an hour after two hours. And this basically, that keeps our landlords from trying to exploit it longer. Most of them, we get done in an hour, but there are some that try to.
Yeah, I've got two to do that are going to go well over two hours.
Constable Jackson and Estrada, you're in support of this?
Yes, we're in support of that. And that writ of possession, that was a fool go last year or that was just a trial.
Why are you here?
I'm behind the scenes. And I'm standing.
But comfortable of all, and the words saying is true. When we go to these trainings and get updated with the civil process and when we do that, they look at Texas as a whole and counties, 24 counties. So, when that brings us up, that's to protect our county, especially with a fee like that. And that's not in our budget. We don't power line out on board transportation or any of that. That's just a preventive, preventative issue that came up. And we said, let's do this because we need to protect our county and our taxpayers also. So, that is why we headed, let's get this in here to.
Well, in that effect, the guy who brought it to light about this writ of attachment deal, he's the one that wrote the book on civil process. Chief Deputy.
He's the, he's the ex-chief deputy of the Houston Constable Office. And he authors, we consider the Bible on civil process.
Ted, any opinion, just confirming we're legally allowing to do this?
Well, my only question is, in Scotland, is statutory toward the states particular things?
Well, the local government code simply says that the Michigan report was set. Any non-statutory established, the way the case law developed, simply has to be a reasonable basis for that to be, and I think it articulated a reasonable basis for it.
And you may see more of it. You have countries downstate, but I got that one, which is very depressing.
We're getting a lot more credit. In my court, we're getting tons more credit card stuff. I mean, even now, BSA is now going after people.
I think we're shooting.
I make a motion that we approve the sheriff and constable piece for civil process service as presented to the court.
I have a motion and a second on favor, right hand, five, zero. Thank you. Okay, seven. Election, number seven, municipal election. Is the order of election for the purpose of our role. County assistance district rule one for number seven, ten seventeen. And they do consider certain orders that will supply voting operations. And go to the special election, good morning.
The first one is the order of the county assistance district. And this is, the wording that will be on the ballot is different than what you guys had authorized last time. I checked with legal and Secretary of State. And the wording for these types of measures is highly specified. And we were not allowed to put in the extra few words stating that this was to benefit fire and rescue. So.
And so, unfortunate. I was going to call, but I didn't want to go up and leave. So, this, yes.
It's very disappointing because it's, the way it's, the way this wording is stated, it just sounds like it's going to be a welfare deal.
So, that just means that the. Well, that's what the people are just going to have to work harder. And that route just count like.
Okay.
We already have a plan and.
Paul, yes, you do. I have to do.
Okay. So, Melinda, I just want to make sure on that second page, that's the language. Authorization, authorizing the creation of the Potter County Assistance District number one under imposition of sales and use tax for the rate of 2% for the purpose of financing the operations of the district.
That is correct. Okay, this is the exact language that was on there the last time.
Okay, you just have a job to do, you got to keep it on there.
Yes, okay.
Because we need to vote on it.
Yes.
We approve the order of election for purposes of operating Potter County. This is just.
I have a motion and second on favor, right hand.
Yeah.
The second one is the order of appointing the elections official, establishing the hours of operation, establishing the maximum number of alerts for early voting. And in this one, I, county and I are working together to have the same hours at our voting places in order just to create a lot less confusion. We also are looking at, since we are making the four branch locations, the same hours for the most part as the Santa Fe building, we will be feathering our workers to where we have extra help at the branch locations during the hours where we have the most people vote. But we'll be on a very lean, lean number of workers on the very beginning of the day and the very end of the day in order to make this cost effective.
I believe that we accept the ER's seven, three, eight patients. And there's a very special question.
Second. I have a motion, second on favor, right hand. Number eight, elections voting, consider accept the contract from the authority.
Okay, we have a very extensive packet on this one. It includes approval from the Secretary of State for this voting system in Potter County. I can tell you that at federal level, voting has been put under homeland security and it has been designated as critical infrastructure. And homeland security has stated that the biggest vulnerability to elections is aging voting equipment. So, we went through a very structured RFP. We had a group from the county that evaluated the three vendors that came and proposed. And it was based off of price, functionality, the fact functionality being huge in this service and service history with the vendors and their economic strength. And you can see in there that what the evaluating committee recommended, the recommendation is Hart and Intercivic and their verity system. I can tell you this is the right system at the right time for Potter County. We have found a way to fund it with this, but as far as the evaluation is concerned, that there was no one who was ranked nearly as high as Hart did by the committee. We are looking to fund this with $760,000 that was previously budgeted in this 2016, 2017 budget. Then my budget, with my discretionary funds, my 236, 237 changed slightly so I can bring $100,000 to the table in 2018. And then the balance is in the special projects fund for the county. We, I'm asking for this today because we would like to be able to roll this out in November. Excepted, we have acceptance and testing, we have training, and we're assured that we can be up and running with a very reliable system in November.
With this system, we got another third party putting the ballot together.
That was one of, absolutely, that was one of the priorities of the RFP is we wanted to be trained to do our own coding, programming, the whole thing inside the county. And so, that's part, that is part of our training.
I was on that committee on verity. It was very, very urgent.
They were there all three days until we did the whole process. And certainly, I agree that it was about four. Experience and proactive and superfluous. And so, we realize that the county.
Who else was on the committee?
We had Carrie, I had, I hope I can speak up. Kristy, Katie was there from IT. So, we really had, it was really interesting because only two of us were really familiar with elections. The others got a big education of all the steps that go through in doing the education. But IT was extremely helpful because they understood a lot of what it takes to get this. And they'll be kind of our safety net at times when we need them to be.
So, a couple of follow-up questions from the IT perspective. Are there additional infrastructure needs that we expect outside of this? Like sometimes what happens, we approve this and then, oh, we need a new server for space. Or, oh, we need this. Is there anything we need to be anticipating?
Not to my knowledge.
This looks like a really turnkey system. Everything's closed network.
Okay, and then the proposal of how to pay for it? I'd like to write it, by the way. It said, how to pay for, paying for it. Yes, right. The proposed, the 2017 to 2018 carry that amount, is that already in our budget? That's already in there? And then what about maintenance from year to year? Where will that come from?
That, in the next year, in 2017, 18, we will not have anything additional in that year. It will be put under contractual, which will be in my Fund 110. And when we looked at this system, or all of our systems, we looked for 10 years out. And these guys had the most reasonable annual fees and service and all that. So, that will be coming from my 110, but not until the 18, 19 year will let that begin.
And will you remind me what the Fund 110 is? Is that?
That's my, that's my general.
Just your, so that comes from our budget?
Yes, yes, in the future.
And do we know what we expect that to be with that maintenance? Is it 3%, 5%?
It's a fourth growth week. There's a schedule for that. And your two would be $59,712.48. And it has the ability to go up no more than 4% in a given year.
It's substantially less than what we paid for it to.
Yes, well, what do you mean? Oh. No, it is not, but it is substantially less than what was proposed by any vendor.
Okay, and there's no grant, says this falls under homeland security.
Not at this time and until.
There's no grant to say, no, like jumping ahead, trying to proactively address this.
No, and so, until something comes in. We can hope at this time, no.
I believe that we accept the contract. So, we're going along with the recommendations.
Yeah, we do.
I see how that works there.
We're getting quiet, what do we know?
When you're right, you're right.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion and second on. I'm sorry, who said I did it? Uh, church. Did you vote yes? Five, zero, thank you for that. Okay, to vote for the verity voting.
Yes, and this is just a standard that's required by law. And so, you'll see the adoption order there. It includes adopting our intercivic verity voting system. It also includes a line that we are rescinding our current use of our election equipment. And that would be in its totality. This is something that is required by law and has to follow after the Secretary of State has given us permission and approval of the contract and this voting system. And so, we are just following our own call.
Move it out for guarantee. Voting system for Hart, where civic for use in Potter County elections beginning November 7th, 17.
Okay, I have a motion and second on favor, right hand, five, zero. Melinda, have you signed this order on this or do you have an original?
Yes, I think that, I think that that has what you're going to.
Okay.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. You're going to skip down so the people from Carolina won't have another day while we're sitting here. Carolina, it's making a better center and have to vote from any river municipal waterway to purchase a pipeline. I have any backup on this? Did you, anybody have any backup?
I thought that I had.
It's just, it's a lot. That's a bad, to make more of it.
I have, I have the east.
My name is Scott, I thank you a lot, Hartwell, Mr. George, and with us here is the General Manager of Canadian River Water Authority, Ken Sattenway, and Deputy General Manager of.
Chad, correct?
Chad, correct. I know that, I only worked for them for twenty years. Uh, just to give you overview of the project itself, the Canadian River Water Authority owns, probably one of the largest water rights over the United States. But they own a good portion of the water rights in Marvus County. So this, this line you see, this blue and yellow line, is a proposed new pipeline to run water all the way from Marvus County to northeast Amarillo. Maybe, maybe know which, north of Amarillo is the regulating reservoir there, kind of train gear shape. That's where that pipeline comes to. Uh, at this point, it's, it's about a fifty-four inch line, it may go larger. But basically what it does allow the authority to double the water capacity that can deliver to that point. Uh, and it's in, it's in preparation for something we would have, maybe have in bay in the future, and that would be to run a parallel line from here all the way to, to his part of the member cities. One of the other cities, I don't know, and. Uh, so the parcel that we're interested in in Potter County, I mean, this right there, here, here is better with that. Just to give you an idea of the, of the baggage from this project, it's probably $250,000 to $300,000 in volume. I want to get you oriented on that. And two, here's the, here's the airport right here, and then we come up along here, Tampa, you didn't? Tampa right here. Let's get you a little bit closer, this is the regulating reservoir I referred to. And here is the property that, that Potter County, and you guys have the fire station there. And we'll get you a little bit closer.
What fire station is that, we know?
So here is the, the property that we're looking at, this is Potter County's property. We actually came in with a hundred twenty foot wide, and then to work with this fire station, we, we reduced that down to a hundred foot, uh, roadway, and then on your property, expand that back up to another comfort, by the way. Uh, there is, there are provisions for a second pipeline in the future, and that could be not for that time, uh, but it's, it's there. So, uh, so that's the project, uh, and, and, and help with the deck, you guys. Question, I'll answer, check, see with the fire department, any issues over here?
I still haven't ever got to see it.
So what is the purpose, other than obviously the pipeline, establishing the pipeline? What is the, usually there's a business motivation, or there's something that we're prepping for?
Additional water needs for our cities, in particular Amarillo as well. And there's possibility that Amarillo may upsize the pipeline for their own benefit and utilize that extra capacity. So, uh, right now, we're just acquiring easement. We won't probably start design, the thought process rundown is around 2020. And then we build this, you know, shortly after that.
And where does the $250,000 to $300,000 come from?
Eleven cities.
And so the cities contribute to, physically?
Yes.
To, to this, and they all cost share, assuming like the percentage is based on the population or something?
Actually, it's based on population.
Okay.
So each, each participates in a certain, in certain way based on how patient water they, that they are part of.
And it's also part of the original contracts with the Canadian River Authority, that they create the Canadian River Authority, basically. And so they would pay their share, we'd issue bonds, that they would pay.
So you would issue bonds, then these eleven cities would contribute to this big ticket dollar item, and that this is to help prepare for the future water, as the cities continue to grow?
And it's also part of, in the later supply and not being able to supply the big dependence always to some retirement work, so it's, it's going to help with that.
Okay, and then what, so the layer agenda item reads as to purchase it, is that an agreement? Is that a contractual agreement?
That's the one that's supposed to be in the package, the second one where it is.
Well.
The purchase price is $4,370. That was based on the phrase to verify that Stephen Rogers. And that price is based upon actual sale, as though they're actually buying the land.
Right.
What it's really about is just trying to cross the land and continue to add to the pipeline. The questions I had for Chief Lanning were, and these gentlemen, is, we've got a fire station there. This pipeline will go in between the fire station and the Highway 136. And so, I know we're a long ways off, but that's something that certainly.
I think that's something we'll just have to coordinate is, we don't have any place else to store the trucks. So if they do cross over that, leave an access or give it out. When they move somewhere else, we can do other access. I think we've worked around it just fine. Other than, and we've already discussed the water and the natural gas service, that the building, it will be crossed, which is our issue.
So Ted, because we do have this anomaly with the fire station in the property, and I'm thinking through even the future plans, right, might not be in our lifetime. Would it do us well to contractually build an agreement to be able to, when none of us are here, someone can pick up from that and say, what was the intent of them back in 2017 when they did this? Like instead of us taking the standard agreement, because I'm sure you have a template that you sent our way and all that good stuff?
Actually, the template has that worked in there, no, this, this is, this is what it looks like.
Okay.
But yes, and it actually includes language like that in there.
Okay.
And, and it's been explicitly indicated what rights this, the authority has in here, and sort of what rights the county has, with the pipeline.
Yeah, what we're really looking at is signing non-organic real estate documents.
Sorry, what you said?
We're just looking at real estate.
Right, so we're just basically giving permission to go through that.
That's about right. And once it's all done, it'll look just like it did, this pipe, the area?
The area, why don't you tell us there? Wish I had asked back.
I don't know if this is. I completed it, you have to pack it to the next agenda.
Or do you just email it, be that as a plain reference? I think it's okay. Yeah, a form reference would be good to go back to, to this date, to say, oh yeah, I'll talk about that.
You'll need to start it.
So, but I would, what says to purchase the pipeline, are we putting in green on that?
High market.
Easement, we're, we're purchasing that easement.
No, we're.
Okay, good, sure. And that, and how do we, um, how do we discern what that market, I know you referenced Steve, the fireman, right, but how do we know, other than his opinion, how do we know if that's the right market value?
Let me give you some history of your life, we actually did a market study, I'm actually afraid you'll vote, a market study of the whole thing. And from that, uh, we, we looked at basically what properties we're selling for on the park. And from, and from that, we looked, we looked at, okay, what's, what's open pasture? Farmland is not irrigated, so that fell within the one group, and irrigated, uh, well, that's a lot more than the market. So from that, we, we looked at what that, what those markets were. We're actually paying offered more than what we believe, and what Mr. Rogers believes is actual market value. We're actually paying, as, as we mentioned, we're actually paying above market value, full value for pipelines. Typically, a pipeline easement will pay half of the market value. We're paying full market value plus a 500-foot remainder, which is basically, if, if, if this was high-end real estate, you have a pipeline near well, is, is a property right next to it worth the same as it would be without that there? That's the logic. So it also leaves compensation at, at 20% of full value for 500-foot with, with that, that remainder. So we believe, collectively, this is a very, very good offer.
Okay, and as you, the math that you started with, Mr. Church, this may be, you may have certain knowledge of this. Will this, any of this go through residential property? And I just want to think through the whole impact of.
Some of it does.
Okay, and what does that look like for the people that live in that area?
Well, so, me, the, the, the resident might claim here, because we actually just get his, his garden, and the right to use it as well, and the same price on permits, that will prove to be have three guys.
Can we get our money up, can we, I'm gonna have to get our money up now? I said I think it's a hammer price for, for this, this per acre land out there, so I mean, I feel that I, so.
Yeah, and once I, yeah, the per acre price works out just under a thousand dollars.
So we're, I think it's, it's a really nice offer. I believe that we accept the Canadian River Water Authority's proposal to purchase pipeline easement across.
Second, on favor originally.
Checks in the amount.
We'll just write you a check.
Okay, number eight, the authorization for T C Q compliance. Consider authorization required by Texas Commission on the Bar and Coffee, but discharge of treated equipment at the Love's Travel Shop, Stock, and the 200 Expansion Project.
Yes, so we are, we're representing Love's Travel Stock and Country Stores. They have a store, it's actually store number 250, out at I-40 in Arnhem Road. Uh, they're looking to expand that store, and as part of that, they have paid us in our services to authorize for a T P D S discharge permit through T C Q. As part of that process, we're required to get authorization from the county to discharge.
So can you break up those acronyms, and what does that stand for? And what is the discharge that you're asking that's?
Yes, so the T P D S is the Texas Pollution Discharge Management System.
Okay.
Which allows us to do a direct discharge from a waste water facility versus doing onsite irrigation or underground irrigation.
So will you explain that process, what is that discharge?
What is that? Well, uh, you know, for, for, we're engineering, we're in Austin, Texas. What that is, we have to file an application with the state, the Texas, uh, uh, T C Q, Texas Department of Environmental, or Environmental Agency here, uh, to get a permit for discharge. What they plan to do is put in, I think, two, two restaurants, expand the facility, make it the most accessible facility out there. And because of that, we are, uh, this, this facility is located in excess of five miles. Yeah, that's five miles from the city of Amarillo. And, uh, our goal would be to kind of, no one wants to be in that way, or since we're so far away and it can't tie into it at this time. We understand that the city is going to be expanding, it's sometime, but we have no idea. I know that at some point they would want to tie into the city at some point. So at this time, we don't have any other, many options except to do our own site wastewater treatment. When you do a, when your discharge is in excess of 5,000 gallons a day, and we're going to be around 10,000, you're required to get an actual permit, you can't just do the subject subservive disposal, give that community treatment plant permit, do real treatment to the, to the facility. So what, uh, what would be required to do is commit either type one or type two wastewater. What that needs is, is a, uh, that, that, that impacts the quality of the wastewater. A type one wastewater is one that's, that would be, uh, you'd have contact with people could actually be in contact with it, and it would be suitable, that it wouldn't cause diseases or be a concern or contact, that'd be type one. And it, it's basically treatment is biological treatment. Uh, it, uh, it treats it to a level, it depends on what T C Q sets our methods at, we probably took the order of 10 milligrams per liter of VOD, and that's, that's a pollution, that's a term that we use, uh, to, to, to describe how the quality of, 10 is pretty high quality. So what we need, what we'd like to do is, is have a discharge into that right-of-way. Now, the discharge is 10,000 gallons a day, that's about five, six, seven gallons a minute, some of it come out of the car dunks. And what we really would like to do is get, get that, get that permit, and then immediately file for what we call a two-ten permit, which is a irrigation permit. And that would allow Love to then irrigate all, any of this property, or actually we'd irrigate any property that's in that permit, would even be other people across the street that, that anyone else would want it, and Love would be, could, could, could deal with it, and Love would do part of it. It would, it would give us, it would give us, and what I really want to want to do is, is, you know, irrigate at some point and use it in their landscaping. But to get, you get the discharge permit, that that allows you to file for a two-ten, irrigate, uh, basically anywhere that's, that permit allows you. Alternatively, we can't just go and get a subservive sort of already, like, application instead of discharge. In that case, though, we'd be limited to the area that we actually, uh, we wouldn't really have that flexibility for using, uh, you know, the, the devices.
I'm surprised this property doesn't fall in the ETJ, for only five miles outside, Mr. Church?
I'd say it's part of the, I, I believe, it's still part of the city candy, or not, I candy health. So they're, they've been involved with it, they're, they're, so. All these gentlemen are asking is if we would agree to allow this treated F one, F two to run down our right-of-way until the, the design permit to irrigate.
Right, and as soon as the utilities from the city expand further west, I mean, like you were saying, it's very expensive to run these wastewater treatment plants, and so they would obviously want to to adopt the sewer collection system at the city of Amarillo, it's just, it, this.
You don't have a timeline.
Right.
That could be a year, that could be ten, right, you don't know that.
That's what we don't know.
Is there, is there a chance that you couldn't get the second permit?
No, we, I, I, you know, no, we will be able, I think we'd be able to get the permit. I mean, he's a permit, I think we'll be able to get, I, I think, I'm not sure, we allowed it, and we didn't get it.
Where does, where's that legal, where does that, Sebastian, where does that drainage run to?
He's not here, Sebastian's here.
Who, who's here?
I'm there.
I saw a blue shirt there. Do you know where it runs from there? Does it go to Pla somewhere?
It's, uh, it's most of that water just stands a lot of time.
Hopefully they'll fix that.
Hopefully.
Uh, the, uh, the discharge point is approximately 40 miles of, of, of Randall Camp, where you get the Randall Camp.
Yeah.
So it's going to Randall? You know, the flow that we see here, we, we've got, we've designed a lot of numbers of these. This flow is going to be so small, I mean, really, I don't know, I don't understand it, but it's, it's, it'll never get to that point, it'll never get. I did an exhibit of the, the drainage ditch, we're showing it to be, I mean, just a one-inch right at the discharge.
So you're saying, I'm just, I'm trying to recap, that Love's is looking at expanding to restaurants, they don't tie into the city's wastewater, and so your services are being entertained to help them establish whatever that wastewater treatment, type one and type two, and then getting your other permit?
To, yes, to design the facility.
Okay. Just, are they going to put out there, the restaurants?
We have a representative, Jonathan Hartman.
Hi, listeners, I appreciate your time, I'm Jonathan Hartman, I, I work with Love's. I'm Jonathan Hartman, I, I work with Love's, and uh, we don't have a food concept yet. Currently, we have subway. When we don't have the ability for, um, sewer, we, we use a subway, a subway, uh, gas company type here. So until, we're, we're looking at revamping the whole site, we have twenty acres, uh, we're looking at rebuilding the store.
And is there something that Love's is seeing, like, in the market in that area specifically? Cause I can imagine this is not a cheap undertaking, uh, to move in this direction. And I'm looking at the location of where that's at.
This store is, uh, is number two, two fifty, it's one of our earliest stores, it's run down, it, it needs a facelift on both sides, and that's really what we're trying to do, we can't do it without sanitary.
Right, for sure.
And, and we've done it several times in different areas, it's just, it's just a different cost of maintenance.
A tad from a legal perspective, we don't put these requests often, so, uh, what, what are, what is our diligence, other than if we, or decline this permit, what?
Well, I think the diligence part of it is really the Texas Commission, part of the state environmental department, because if they're good with it, the, the science department will contract the permission.
And we, we did reach out to the Bi Health Department and the City Health Department and both of them are on board, it's, it's technically out of their jurisdiction because T C Q regulates this permit, it'll be a state of authorization.
I move that we, uh, word, uh, offer, or authorize the requirement stated by the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality for Discharge and Treatment of Fluids at the Love's Travel Stop, number two hundred?
It's two fifty.
Two fifty, sir. What's the address?
Off the way, on on. And I'll second, promotion.
Two fifty.
The agenda reads two hundred, they stated two fifty.
I was better off with the website.
We go, we go.
Yeah, store, store two hundred, it's, uh, off the way, so.
Did you bring backup?
Okay, wait.
I don't know.
Uh, okay, we have the motion, and second on favor, is your name? Um, Ziva, thank you.
Okay, let's, uh, let's, let's do number nine and ten now, yes, uh, next page, I'd like to see your service to hear it again on the description office, um, Elizabeth Church, is here. Elizabeth, okay.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mrs. Church.
Yes, good morning. I'm just gonna be brief, I'm gonna update you on a couple programs that Extension has been involved with. One of them that I was really excited about was this weekend, I partnered with Raymond at Amigos, um, we've been out there since twenty thirteen twice a year to be part of their health fair, annual health fair, and so of course it targets, uh, families in East Amarillo. So I took an exhibit out there, this time I changed it up a little bit, and we focused on, um, cholesterol, diabetes, and heart health, and so the exhibit was on whole grains and teaching families how simple it is to switch from white rice to brown rice, the traditional flour tortilla to a tortilla made with whole grain, uh, whole wheat, and so we had samples out there, the bakery made some whole wheat tortillas, passed those out, we had some, uh, whole grain cereal for the kids without sugar, to teach the families how to incorporate that into their diet, so we had a good time out there. And, um, some other updates real quick coming up that keep us real busy is Senior Day at the Tri-State Fair, so we're gonna have the Senior Health Fair, and that is the first Monday, I believe it's the eighteenth of September, so we're planning that because many of the, um, community leaders in Potter involved provide resources to keep our seniors healthy, so that's gonna keep us busy and we're excited about getting that together. Also, Pride of the Panhandle takes place on Wednesday at the fair, and this year we're going to, uh, we have a new initiative, it's called Path to the Plate, it's a statewide agri-life initiative, and we're excited about that, I serve on the State Committee, and I'll be traveling as well to, uh, the State Fair of Dallas to continue that training for Path to the Plate, it's educating consumers on the path that our food takes from production to our plates, we wanna debunk some of the myths and help families understand that we do have a safe food supply, and so, um, that's exciting, you'll be seeing more of that, it's called Path to the Plate, we'll highlight that at the Pride of the Panhandle, and we, uh, we'll pass out, we'll have food demos and samples of our foods here in the Panhandle, highlighting our, uh, main commodities, okay? And then one other thing that I always like to highlight that we're excited about, that we're working on, is also called Learn, Grow, Even Go, uh, I think most of you have heard about all the things I talk about, but we still, um, we're proud of this program because it teaches our kids in Title One schools about gardening, they either have an outdoor garden or an indoor grow light garden, and they grow their own vegetables, and then they, um, learn how to prepare those vegetables, and then they eat those vegetables, and what gets us excited is that we've never seen so many kids enjoy eating vegetables, but when they take ownership and grow them, they enjoy eating them. So we'll continue with that program as well, getting ready to begin to implement that in all in school starts. But that is, thank you, so, uh, highlight, and then Tina is gonna come up next.
Honey, are you here on number ten, Tina? Okay, okay. Thank you, Elizabeth.
You're welcome, I'll just say, okay. For saying Texas Agri Life Extension Service to consider an active qualification of the title of Administrative Assistant to Program Assistant and to move a portion of the salary budget from the Office Manager position to Program Assistant. So here's the draft description, please. This is the one you're requesting to change it to? Yes. So, yes, so we've, um, you know, we've had this position that the Administrative Assistant position's been open for about a year, um, so we, we didn't wanna jump in and just hire somebody just to fill the position, we really wanted to step back and kinda look at what the needs of our office are, and with our programs growing like they are, we really felt that the need would be for just the Program Assistant position, not, you know, not a shared position like we originally had it, just that way this person's main focus is gonna be, um, Institute for Curriculum and assisting agents in their needs for their programs.
Now, was this the gentleman that was seen the last time?
That is her, that is her L T assistant, that's, uh, Kate and Cottle, she is under a grant that are gonna be protected, this will be a full, it'll, it'll, yes.
I had, I had visited with Brandon about this, has he talked to you at all about, uh, I talked to him about-
I've got a little short bit on an elevator, but you're right.
But my, my concern is that really, and this is based on what I've heard, that the real need out there is something for horticulture, and, um, it seems to me like that, you know, your, your current office manager, well, that's her title, she, she probably knows you are about four H, anybody you could hire for this position, and, um, my thinking is that we ought to make this position an agriculture, a program assistant. In my experience, thirty-six years in Extension in agriculture, I always thought it was livestock land, I always thought that that's what, that was gonna be my specialty, but everywhere I served, whether it's Little Pan, or it's lots of livestock producers and everything, majority of the questions was, what's wrong with my tree? What can I plant? What's this insect? Uh, I would say ninety, ninety-five percent of the questions that we get are, or that the ag agent gets at the potter pan, sort of, and so, uh, and I think that's been neglected for, for some time, and so, personally, if this was gonna be a horticulture, uh, program assistant, I'd be all for it.
I mean, we, you know, our, our four H program is growing, we have five hundred and fifty-five four Hers, and we're already inwards of getting multiple after-school programs at different elementary schools and middle schools here in town, so, and I see your point out of the tree, and this position can help in, uh, you know, several different areas, um, you know, our, we do get those phone calls, but that's with the ag agent, he takes those calls in, if he doesn't have the answer, he goes to a specialist, or if we don't have one, we send it to the district office, so, um, I just really-
Well, I know for the last three years anyway, there has been very little interest shown from ag agent for agriculture, and if potter pan, that should be the number one program, not the big on the back burner.
You know, I'll just say, almost like, easy.
And every agent works in four H. Everybody needs to understand that, it's not just yours, four H agent, yeah, so, there's a lot of help in four H.
It just has grown, it just has grown over the years, and we, we're not seeing as many of the calls in horticulture, we're really not, and we just, I don't think we can justify a full-time position just to answer questions about horticulture, because we're not getting that many questions anymore.
I think there'd be more than answer questions.
You know, I, I understand that it's a-
There, there's, we had a, we had a master gardener program, we had over a hundred people volunteers, now we have none, basically. Why is that?
We have, we have five or six, you know, in the-
Because there's not any interest.
And I think that's key why that agent, when that position is filled, right, whatever those applicants look like, I think Brandon has traditionally been pretty proactive about involving the court, and no surprise, Mr. Church, we would lean on your experience, I know I have leaned on your experience as we're vetting these candidates, and what does that experience look like? I was disappointed that it took so long, that it has taken so long to fill that position, um, I recognize why, but to Tina's point, Elizabeth's point, this is an unfilled position, this is in the budget today, this is what they're experiencing in the office today. When we lost our last agent, one of my first questions was, how will the off, are you guys okay, how can we survive? And part of it was, yes, we, we have a plan and we're trying to address that and make sure that we continue to keep moving, and this was part of the strategy, was to get this position in field to help offset those needs. But I think what, hopefully what we've seen from these agents is, they are active, they are in the community in all parts of our county, and the programs all look very, very different, uh, which I think is a good reflection, but, but I don't, I mean, I, again, I would lean on your experience.
Is it more of a diversity, is that what you're getting?
Yeah, I mean, at least what I have seen, uh, we are entering in programs that are different, and we've gotten state recognition in those programs, uh, so other counties are looking at what we're doing in this county and trying to mirror that, so I think, I mean, at least it speaks to some of the work that's been done, right?
And so she talked about paths of plan, she was on the committee and was selected to be on the committee for the more indoor programming on that, and then I was selected to be on the youth and committee for paths of plan, and so we're implementing lessons planned, and going into schools and bringing back to the classroom and teaching that. So, um, yeah, I think we just, it's grown, links and balance, and so we just need to be proactive and stay on top of it so that we can do our best to offer what the needs are.
Give my last two sentences, stay up. But my last two sentences, if we're gonna ask the ag agent to do horticulture work, then we've got to say, you don't go to all these livestock shows, that's, that is the biggest, this is my opinion, the biggest waste of time that we have, is sending an ag agent to a livestock show.
Does the Commissioners Board, they'll have authority to say that?
We can, we, there are counties in this district that limit the number of those that can do it.
So like a policy?
Policy.
Okay, okay, and I'm not against that, I think that would be fine, that way it's in black and white, and, you know, this is the show that I can go to, and there's not that issue of you're going too many, too many or you're not going, you're gonna have enough.
I oversee that, that department.
Okay, so we can, uh, get them in a telephone-
And Commissioner Church, I will lean on you, as that position starts to get filled, um, to start to discern what that policy might look like, and really see that to fruition. I know you mentioned it a couple of times, right?
Well, it's, it's frustrating, cause I've expressed that every time we've had opening, in nine years, we've had, like, five or six different people, and it's always the same, I'm gonna hire somebody, that's always, anything I wanna do.
Do you have someone in mind for this position already?
It is open in terms of, I believe we do have options, I don't, I haven't so granted as to when you see that to be closed, or, I believe there are athletes, but they can't, we can't make them move until September first, so, that's just because we're on a hiring freeze, that's the thing.
Ted, I don't know if we need a, do we need a motion on this to formally change it? We just-
I would say that would be a fair, yeah, a neat decision.
Would it be beneficial before we, um, just to, to change the description to say experience in horticultural, um, beneficial or needed or whatever, could we do that?
Okay.
That'd be a little bit better? A little bit?
Okay. I'll make the motion, uh, I make the motion to approve the modification of the title of the Administrative Assistant to Program Assistant and to move a portion of the salary budget from Office Manager position to the Program Assistant, all of which is currently budgeted.
Yes.
Okay, you have the motion, any second?
On favor, is your hand?
Opposed.
Thank you, ladies, I appreciate you.
I've never led Bushland Schools, offered to provide funding for widening Simmons Road. To consider an act upon any decision made in regards to Bushland I S D offers, Bushland I S D's offer to help fund this program.
Okay, um, I received a call after our budget meetings, and Don Wood, he has been talking to us about widening Simmons Road, and I believe, after our last get-together with the, uh, Sheriff's Office and Road Department, we agreed to hide right of letter, and let them, we kinda put the ball back in their, uh, their court, and asked them to do whatever engineering they thought needed to be done and all that, since we have, we do not have an engineer on staff here, uh, and so, like I mentioned earlier, I got this call right after the budgeting process we went through, and they offered three hundred and fifty dollars, fifty thousand dollars to, uh, towards this project, but I think we're still in the same boat, we don't have any design, which I don't really wanna take, so I don't know, I just wanted to bring it to you so that you know we've had this offer, it's not included in our budget this year, so I don't know what, what we can do. Now, since it's offer, I have, other than I talked to him on the phone, he sent me this email, and I said, well, it kinda like to have something official, other than your words.
Simmons Road, that's the one where, uh, we discovered, we are in our, we're in the park, and, right?
Very little ask bar.
Okay, it's, um, do you think this is a pretty good offer? I mean, three hundred and eighty thousand, would it even touch what we, what is going on there?
I don't, I don't think, what's the distance of the road?
About ten feet.
I don't think, I still think we should get them to do, start the ball rolling, get the engineer, then present that to us, and then we can go from there, that'd be the best option.
I agree, I agree, it's fair. Let me see.
I don't think they will, um, of course there'll be new leadership there after the end of the year, because Mr. Wood is retiring. Well, we've done that, it's an interesting situation out there. What the problem is, is that we had that narrow little road, it was an old Pan- What the problem is, is that we had that narrow little road. It was an old country road. And now it's not country anymore. Lots of traffic, lots of people. And they're trying to get in and out of those schools, and the traffic jam is just, is really bad. What they're wanting to do is lighten it, and what that would entail is buying up some property, just like these people came in. But they didn't, they're just doing the ease, but we'd have to take control of the property. So that, the cost of that would probably be quite high. Um, then engineer the roads, though. We'd probably have to build a full half-mile, which that's about what it is from where the county road starts to Grand Canyon. We'd have to probably do a half-mile road. I know it's a dilemma we're facing out there in many aspects, from the fire department, sheriff's department, roads, everything, because we're getting so many people coming out there and they're all within services. So, what do we do? They're offering three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for this school. I know in years past, we tried to get text off because Hollywood is state and everything else is state. We tried to get them to, to claim that as state, put it in, but they're walking away from that.
Well...
It's just hard for the court to know what decision without it's articulated, if it's their asking to do.
Right. So I think we need to text them, be, just building that.
Over a good tag, I'll try to get together.
Okay. So no action to that today. Number twelve, they need LGC Florida County membership to consider an act of support under the name of the LGC Commissioner's Board.
I thought the, uh, please go, uh, side of the Commissioner, Maria, uh, certainly at the committee. But I ask right now, I know that there's a lot of thing ongoing, uh, special assignments that, uh, she's busy, right?
Yeah.
Of special practices, because of actually moving forward to, uh, who's gonna, who wants to follow, uh, the, uh, the ability of that, uh, and, and also, uh, another property factor ongoing. I think my space for that contract was, uh, a lot to be able to finish out here, but we'll make that and we've definitely made a plan in the next year to... My concern is, and I, I brought this up in April, and I don't think this is a big surprise to you, is that one person shouldn't be serving at the place where people, people are on, on the court, who aren't serving on the team. I mean, citywide, Commissioner, or... So, um, and since Commissioner Maria was just appointed Chair of the tiers two, uh, and she's also involved with the, uh, with the community planning, plus the LGC, I just, I just think it would be more appropriate if we shared these responsibilities so that, uh, our representation would, would be better served. Oh, I don't, I don't disagree with that all, Commissioner, but I think that, I think it might be a little bit absurd that we did, uh, stopped out and missed strength that, uh, Commissioner, to this term, especially now. I think you need to look at it, uh, in the near term, uh, next year, and then have someone else assume that position. I agree with that.
I agree. Okay, so you're on, Special Commander, I'm on LGC, yes. Well, how long do you think that committee, that you just got appointed, is gonna take to do what you're supposed to be doing?
We don't have a timeline yet, Judge, and to answer your point, Commissioner Church, about tiers number two, I do have an agenda item, and that recently just got started. We had our very first operational meeting. So I'll give an update on that. I would expect a full six months to a year for that really to get going. So that may align with what the thought is of this board.
Okay, so, um...
You want to...
I have, I have a thing setting in our very day, day, as well. So we're saying, say, somebody will have something bullets. But we would have this be a city path, which is going to, uh, have that position to change. Uh, again, I think that because we're in the process of having hands-on that, uh, commissioners are actually, uh, into physical right now. I think we'll do a little bit of, uh, extract it from that, kind of, right now. But in the past, that's looking in the year, that's, that's...
I think I'll be, I think I'm the only member of the court that's ever started on the LGC. Have you been on that?
I won't be...
You're tiers? He just said, you're part of tiers. And you, you serve, Kelly?
I'm too sure about tiers.
On tiers.
The only thing I like about the LGC assignment is that without a voting number, we'd be a voting chairman.
I don't think the program changed that.
Well, that needs to be changed.
Yeah, I mean, I think that...
The program changed.
Well, I, I know it's difficult. Yeah, but, um, back to, back to your point, Commissioner Church, um, you know, the neighborhood project was a new initiative, uh, where I hope, and I've said this before, the last time this agenda item was on there, so I'm trying hard at this point to not take it personal, right, if this continues to be on there. But I'm an active and willing member of this court. Um, I have no personal motivations. Um, I have no skin in the game other than to serve the people and to serve this court. And so what I hope that you see as a part of me serving is that you're an informed member of this court. There should be no surprises to you, um, as a result of what happens to these meetings. I understand what you're saying and rightfully, if I can finish, please?
Sure, but I'm just feeling hurt.
That's fine. Um, so what I hope that you see is that you are an informed member. Uh, we are now in active conversations with the city. So when we talk about city-county relationship and partnerships, those are things that we like to say, right? They're lofty things. Those are political platforms. These are real tangible things that we are working. And so we're not gonna get it right. There are some of us that are gonna serve longer than others. Um, it's not like a little cookie cutter. I'm not disagreeing with your comments. But what I'm saying is, what I hope you don't see as a result of it is that you're not informed. Because I take it as a personal motivation and a mission to come back and inform this court. These are all new things. This is all new territory. We didn't have the LGC. We weren't even on there. We didn't have the neighborhood.
I like, I like, I, I like it. I love it, uh, that I see that this court is proactively engaged and willing to participate in all that's going on, especially partnering with the city in a number of things that are ongoing, certainly more than you're part of it. So I think that, uh... But I don't think that one particular... No, I, I don't... Court member shouldn't, uh, represent, uh, some three or four different things. This, this should be shared. I have no problem with partnering. I think that's wonderful, too. But, uh, I think if somebody wants to be that involved in the city, in the, uh, the city position, rather than...
Well, I also think you need to be mindful that a hundred percent of my precinct lies in the city proper, which is very different than your experience as a county commissioner. A hundred percent of my precinct is in the city. So I would be doing my constituents a disservice if I was not watching what is happening in the city.
I think what I'm saying, babe, we just need to set some, some kind of this voice and debate, and then, uh, get more of the commissioners engaged in that. But I think it's, as of right now, you know, need to upset the out of court. And, uh, let's continue with this, and let's start a debate if we can, how we're gonna change the positions that people, uh, move up.
Right. Because why don't we, Commissioner Maria, you let us know, let the board know, whether you're opposed to, to being in this particular, um, LGC. Okay, I don't know. I don't think you have an idea on this.
No, I don't, yeah. But I, I, I am sure of things, so I think that is...
No, I have a question for you, Mike.
I'm sure you'll watch it, Commissioner, so I'm sure it'll be fine. And if I could, if I could request a list of all the, um, the boards that you sit on, that may be worth looking at as well. If we're trying to serve our constituents and I don't see a...
We are, we are a very gaiety court, and, uh, if, if so, we also have, I like going to that, uh, as I said, some points on that.
Let's just, let's pass this for, uh, just two, a month at a time, you see that all or something on that.
Um, a lighter note, number thirteen, National Procurement Institute. To recognize the Department County Prejudice Department has earned a William Seventeen Annual Achievement of Excellence and brokered a goal.
Again, yeah.
Thank you very much. Number thirteen, right, so the eleven...
Eleven, eleven years.
And I will say it's the employees, we...
Absolutely.
We now each, uh, in the participating age is one year, but it's employees underneath the...
Okay. All right, number fourteen, this is just to recognize only, um, before I was overseeing the IT department, we're gonna switch that out, and Mercy was overseeing, uh, collections. I don't have time to go to set the building every month to have, have a department head meeting. So I'm gonna take over collections, this is right across the hall from me, and she will, we will, we'll be acting for that. That's just for, to recognize only, okay? Um, number fifteen, Florida County Burn Man, we hear report, Richard Black in Burn Man, making an...
We can get it. I'll swing out to the front, I don't know.
Okay, we will do that immediately. And Noah called in today, too. Okay, number sixteen, communications tower, to consider an act of support, set up by, by, by Commissioner, uh, contact for erecting a communications tower at the county extension office in order to supply them with a faster and more reliable network connection, the amount of twenty-five thousand three hundred and two cents. Again, there's that two cents for it. Uh, that needs to be determined. Hi, Brandon.
Hi. How are you?
Fine, man.
How are you? Okay, this is the, um, communications tower we've talked about before. Um, they've had a lot of problems out there with their connection. Anytime it rains, it goes down. Takes several days to get fixed. So this, uh, tower should fix a lot of that, um, be much more reliable, give a little, uh, better network speeds for them. So it, it should be a huge improvement on what they have currently.
Where does the money come from on this?
Um, I don't know. We need to discuss.
You're on a check?
Yeah, you're on a check.
We, I did, uh, I did ask Tina and Elizabeth to stay because they experience this on a daily basis. And so please, uh, speak up, or Tina, if you, if you can, what you're seeing in the office, just to give this court perspective of how bad this is. Um, I, my guess, and Carrie, I don't wanna jump in then, but my guess is the only place is contingency. Uh, but we don't give those dollars lightly, so I really, I don't wanna speak for you, Tina. Tell us what's happening, why this tower is needed.
Okay, because people, I mean, if it goes down, we don't have phones, we can't access, it was shared, like all of our files are shared. So we can't do any work now. We basically have to sit there and find things to do in the office. And so, um, and our right eye out there is...
What do you currently, yeah, it's suddenly, if you know that at first.
I don't know. I don't know what to say. It's nineteen, yeah. Somebody's on a rain, it's right now, it's terrible. So, I mean, if you're trying to get work done, you know, it just really makes it hard for your job, so...
And how long has it taken you to open up emails and, like, I mean, to give up respect?
Several minutes, I mean, or sometimes fifteen minutes to get your computer to hook it up and work. And then, you know, we've been down at times, or at days, where you just have no...
We're kind of in Mercy, uh, of ATT to have them come out and look at it and get it back going again. So it's, yeah, it's kind of a...
What is the, what's the timeline, then, to get this done?
Um, it could potentially take a few months, maybe five or six weeks, but, yeah, just to get it all up.
And it stops raining?
Right, yes. That's, that's not gonna help, for sure.
Do you have any idea, Carrie, for any...
I'm just in that account now, uh, we're down to seven, 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 seven.
The only other thing that I would add on top of this is we will need to have more electric, run some electric for it. We have conflict on our place, so it's just running the wire, not getting it up. I, I'm not sure. I assume, so I don't know how much it will be, it shouldn't be so expensive.
Mike, do you have a concern?
Yeah, we should take that out there, since it wouldn't land in replace that. Three electric.
Do you have a motion? Number sixteen. Sixteen.
Who to accept the village's or, like, contact or resident community's tower? I'm just, I'm just, or just fly a little bit faster and allow, that's, and then you put it up minimum on that, it's part of the... Then go and come out as a tenant, get a will, and cause, I don't like that.
Yeah, I told you, like, I can't, I'm just... Right, so now, yeah.
We just checked on our balance, so we got it, they caused that, they're...
So your motion is good, yeah? Yeah, yeah.
Second.
Okay, you have a motion, Dan, second. On favor, as I can. On zero, then three. Okay, number nineteen, school resource officer suggestion to consider a principal or sheriff, attorney, temporary school resource officer, Commissioner ISD, at, which is, so do you wish to know the ISD board people? I don't see how we'd like to say, which is, you know. I didn't want, I didn't really get...
This came to us probably a week after our legislative hearings, which was a surprise to us. They are looking to extend their, their school resource officer program, mainly right now as a temporary because of the athletic bridges that's fixing to go out. And so they want to use that person to help with traffic correction in the morning and afternoon, uh, because the underneath will be closed, so they're gonna have to, um, they're gonna have to route traffic down more often and the other side, who's had to come up to add. Their, their, their whole intention was to hire a retired officer or something like that. So because of licensing and stuff like that, they need to do that. So they're willing to let us provide that person, but they're gonna have to reimburse us for the salary of that. They want this to go through December. Their intention, however, is to continue that and make it a full-time position. Of course, that's, that's just intention, and we don't even know for sure if this is gonna happen. Their scope are meeting us tomorrow night, so I'll find out tomorrow for sure.
How would I expect your resource with his voice, uh, man, I want to bow to you, uh...
We already have a guy that's lined up and ready to go. He's a retired officer from people. And so he's ready to go. We've already got all his stuff done in anticipation of this being passed.
No, it's not me.
It's the elementary and, and the middle school. I think you could...
I could, I think you were saying, you could do all of that.
That's right. The, the other, other aspect of that is, is like I said, they're anticipating this going to full-time after June. They'll go back to the seventy-five, twenty-five, just like what we got now. I talked to Carrie about that. We have, she feels like we would have the funds to cover that throughout the rest of the budget if that, if that was to go. And then at that time, what happens? Actually, I'm sorry, because this guy is, is gonna do this for permanent, or for temporary, and he's, he's actually building a house in Georgia and he'll be living in December anyways. But this is what he had at the PD, and he was gonna have it on the other side. So, I mean, he, he's... I mean, that's perfect.
He loves, sort of, kind of moving forward, that tough decision, you know, of, uh, your, uh, your...
Well, that's what I talked to Carrie about. I mean, we got, she feels like we would have the funds to cover that up through the rest of this budget year, and then he's, and next year, when we go through that, we'll consider this. But again, it's a seventy-five. This would be the full-time, or this would be the temporary for now till December. And then in January, we would do the seventy-five, twenty-five split with them. And then, we, she thinks that we would have enough funds to cover that, and then come January, next year, for the seven, what, eighteen ninety-nine budget, we would have to consider, uh, full-time position. And again, it would be the seventy-five, twenty-five. There's a lot of legislation that has come down because of, that is gonna affect this as well. Um, one of this legislation was Senate Bill Thirty, which is gonna require the school business and the enforcement commissions to come up with a curriculum to teach children, how, again, cops, how to interact with each other. Um, again, you've heard it throughout the media and the native, on the Senator Land basis, this is a direct result of that. And that has passed. Um, they have to have some kind of curriculum by twenty-eighteen school year. I can foresee that we're gonna be spending a lot of time in classrooms from not good to plus good just to teach kids how to interact with us and how we can interact with them. And I'll throw that, as we're talking about that, if you don't go to any of the legislative... And I'll throw that, as we're talking about that, if you don't go to any of the legislative updates, we're fixing to start having those at our office. If you're interested in hearing a lot of those laws that have come down, and I'm sure Scott's probably doing the same thing in his office, so, um, not to jump on his heel, but if, if you would like to go and sit through those, there's about a four-hour class. There's a ton of legislation that is going to affect the county, and you, and money, and unfunded mandates, so. I would offer that out to you, if you would like to, and sit, I will send you this page here, uh, when we will be having those meetings, and we're more than happy to come, we're more than happy to let you come in and sit in the class. There, I mean, there's so many, when, when I made the legislative updates in, in Dallas this year, they couldn't even keep up with which one went into effect in September, April, October, I mean, there's so many of them in there. Uh, and then Scott could probably test, there's, there's, even though the, the state has said we don't have unfunded mandates, I believe there's a few of them, so, anyway, uh.
Of course, they always say that.
So if you're, if you're interested, I'll, I'll send it through, through. And like I said, this is, the only reason why we bring this down is because they start school Monday, next Monday. They, their school board meeting is tomorrow night, um, he wouldn't commit, but they're pretty much on board. And, and from what I've talked to, uh, officer teams and workers out there, and I spoke with several of the school board members, and they're on board for doing this in a way, because. If you remember, well, don't may not know, but they, they tried to do the, uh, concealed care with the teachers out there. Nobody wanted to step up to do that, which, I mean, I don't know that I would wanna do that, as a civilian, and be responsible for that. Uh, we offered the school marshal program to them, which is an ADR course, where somebody actually has to go down to Tegol, and they go through a foster class for eighty dollars to learn the laws and everything. The, the stipulation in the school marshal, though, is very similar to, to the, the air, airline marshals. The school board didn't, nobody gets to know who they are, and the school board said, no, we wanna know who they are, and I said, no, we can't, we don't want to participate. So, they're kind of thrown back into square one, and that's where the school, or the school resource.
I move to, uh, we will power in the temporary, second, to resource officer, Commissioner I M D, at E I S D, Spencer, to E I S D. Second.
Have a motion, second, on favor, if I can. Five, zero. Thank you very much, Sheriff. Number twenty, renewal of land use license, to approve renewal of the land use license for fire department water storage at one three file, one line, in Indian Hill Road. Please turn.
Just to kind of refresh you, a few years ago, we had a business out there, we were looking for a static water supply for the Eagle Tree addition, and, uh, we contacted the owners there, they gave us use of approximately a forty thousand gallon storage tank, that we kept water and fire equipment there. Well, in the last year, the ownership of the business has changed, and basically, all this is, is changing the contract to reflect the names of the new business owners, we have talked with them. Everybody's in full agreement, we're still gonna have full access, uh, the bridge can work on the driveway if we need to improve it or have any issues, and they're still gonna allow storage and necessary fire equipment there for us to be able to use it.
I don't have any issues with that.
I have a motion that we approve the land you like, land use license for fire department water storage at thirteen five eleven Indian Hill Road.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, second, on favor, if I can. Five, zero, thank you. Number twenty-one, law enforcement center, to consider an act upon proposed contracts with advanced communications, ensure access control, security cameras, and cable installations. Well, hi, Brandon.
Hi. Thanks. This is for the law enforcement center up there, um, ACI is a company we kind of looked at to do this, they've done some work, and they are located out of Carrollton, but they have an office in London, so, pretty close. But, yeah, this is for the camera systems they're gonna use out there, both inside and outside, the access control for the doors, and gates, and that, and then a, and that, so. Go, yeah. Um, their camera system will be tied into the, exactly what they use already, and then, uh, the access control part of it is a different piece of work, but it also ties these cameras together, so you can kind of see who's at the door when you wanna open it, which is a good thing.
That's a good thing.
And, uh, the, in the quotes, the S two is a soft click for the access controller, it comes with eight years of maintenance on it. Um, the, the maintenance for it is like a thousand dollars for, and it's just for updates. And that, the activation part of it comes with three years. And I'm not sure on the, on that one, I'll have to look and see, but we've got three years of, of maintenance on it, so.
Walmart, ten, fifteen U?
Yeah, that's, uh, I thought so too, um, so far, the, our deal is with a company, really good company, seems like, they don't wanna work, like I say, in Midland, different, different areas, and stuff like that, and they're happy with them. Uh, seem to know what they're talking about, which is a good thing as well, so, but, uh, yeah, this, funds for this should come out of our, our EC budget.
Okay, and they will, right, they should, I mean, it should, they will.
They should, yes, they, they will come out of, yes. Again, I'm sorry, I'll check for that, sorry.
This purchase is over fifty thousand, it's under a key of multiple agreements.
Yes.
Where he wants to, to turn me publicly, so, this is a very competitive price.
Yeah.
Can I verify that, that contract is in effect?
Motion. Right.
Move to approve the contract with advanced communication, or more access control, security cameras, cables, like, law enforcement center, on the budget, and, and now, well.
You got two calls.
Push two quotes, yes, I'm sorry, uh, the total. I haven't read that somewhere. There's a quote for the sixty-eight thousand, and then there's, uh, the other piece, too, for the table, that's thirty thousand. Put it right in, there's, I remember, sixty-four, four.
Sixty-eight, four, four.
Fifty-four, four.
Sixty-eight, four, four. And a total of ninety-eight thousand, six hundred and seven, nine, eight, thousand, six hundred and seven.
Maybe about, two, maybe about ninety-eight thousand.
Six hundred and seven.
Two thousand, seven thousand.
Okay, second, thank you. I have a motion, and a second, on favor, if I can. Uh, zero. Number twenty-two, taxing government investment, so, tiers, number two, to provide a stable taxation, investment, so, each get away with tiers.
All right, um, this is the first agenda item that you have seen on this, and, uh, we met the very first meeting, July twenty-sixth, at one o'clock, and I was no longer about Frank, who was before the meeting, that the council had asked me to be chairwoman of that committee. So I think that's important for this court to know, I'm certainly extremely mindful that I'm a representative of this court. Uh, I made an immediate phone call to the judge to let her know of that appointment, and so I learned about that about five minutes before the meeting, and then had to go on meeting. So I just wanna make sure that this court knows operationally what's happening behind the scenes, that our judges are aware of the unit's activity.
That was the, I got locked in.
That's the, yes. Fun, huh? Yes.
Yeah.
That you're gonna always remember. Uh, so it was our very first meeting, uh, but what I would say is, it was, um, housekeeping, uh, for the most part, we had to go through, uh, open meetings, training, and the city attorney lent that for a lot of the members, uh, new members that are joining the committee. So all of the taxing entities had their representatives, um, at that meeting. One of the agenda items that I expect for the next meeting, um, is the potential bylaw changes to get the seat back that we had requested at Potter County. And so Commissioner Church, that was an item that you were watching as well, so the reason I agree this court is be thinking, starting to think about who that representative might be, because we're expecting that seat to hopefully come back to the county. So I just wanna make sure this court has time to think through that. Um, we meet, uh, at the end of this month, in August, and so I would expect something maybe early September-ish, so just, just be thinking of, A, the process, or if we just wanna take nominations, I'm certainly, uh, at the discretion of how the court wants to proceed. I wanna just give you notice that that is coming, um, but at that meeting was the election of officers, and so, again, I was the chairwoman, notified five minutes prior to, and then, uh, we went through what is the tier zone? What makes this one, number two, very different from number one? And so number one, obviously, is downtown proper, uh, for the most part, but the map includes lots of business owners, and we now, um, have the, have the benefit of, of perspective in looking at what, what did we learn, kind of the first go around? We had Scott Bentley there speaking to the court, he is the chair, chairman of tiers number one, so he spoke to, to tiers, um, tiers number two, about what did he learn, what are kind of tricks of the trade? What makes tiers number two different is there are actually fewer property owners, there's a handful of property owners in that zone, very different than tiers number one, and what that might kind of look like in the future. But we talked a lot about the goals, and why we were established, and what the charge was for the city council, and what that structure is, it, it ultimately, these decisions fall with your city councils, the tiers is making recommendations, um, and obviously, talking through that TIF fund, that tax increment fund, and how they can use those dollars. So again, that meeting was more, um, housekeeping, just to get everybody aligned, but we do expect to be meeting once a month. Um, the representative from the city, his name is Andrew, and I know his last name is getting slippery here, let's see if I can pull it up real quickly, uh, Bob Cowell is leaving the city, I'm sure you have all heard that. At this point, Andrew Freeman will be our representative, um, our city liaison, and then the city manager joins, I think, as his schedule allows. So more to come, this is very, very new, um, we don't do many tiers, so we only have one as a city, uh, under our belt, but personally, I have to say, I think it speaks very highly that the council would look on any member of this court to potentially chair any of these committees, so, um, not to belabor the point, but thank you for being partners in the conversation with the city. We are in uncharted territory, and I think, um, our work matters, so thank you for that.
The contract's making about twenty-three, they were planning.
Is the time frame gonna be the same?
Thirty years, it's a thirty year. Uh, and Carrie, as this, uh.
To receive, to receive the quarterly report from the city member regarding county funds, contributed to the neighborhood project.
The city just sent this copy of every report, and we're, we're, our funds have been used.
It's part of our interlocal agreement, so it's just a matter of record that we keep putting this information to the report.
In the interlocal, it's, it's say that we need to send our money back, or do they request? Too bad we can't use that money for getting some interest or something, they're doing it.
So, so far, we've contributed three hundred, nine hundred and fifty, nine fifty.
And one thing that I hope that you'll see on this report is, um, the city is really, is Jennifer AJ, the director on this committee, and Jennifer AJ, director on this, on this committee, is with potential matching grants. Um, so, what I thought, that would really be a good testimony to have to use the county money to potentially match, to amplify, how our money can be used versus, um, snacks and airplanes, and, you know, all the miscellaneous, because those are important, certainly, for participating in these meetings, but, um, that's why you still see a, a reserve, if you will, a small reserve, because that's the plan, if there's some matching that they're trying to get done, and that's how, I, I think it would benefit us to use our money.
To Commissioner's point, uh, about the, uh, revenue of, of the funds, so it's in the reservoir that the city controls, and in the time that they spend, just they, they just take out.
That's correct, that's correct. Now, oh, what?
How long did, um, how much duration of time is that money, do I have any idea, was it like, it's sitting there before any expenditures are?
I think it's dependent on the community's uses, so if, uh, it would take a day to spend that money, I'll just say, based on the needs of the neighborhood planning, that could be spent in probably fifteen minutes, that may be an overstatement.
Who would be spending two thousand, two hundred and seventy-four dollars and ninety-one cents on these?
So these are people, uh, the neighborhood, uh, committee members, so this is North Heights, and now the body is the second one, San Jacinto will be the third, and East Ridge is the fourth.
Why are you talking?
Uh, it's a dinnertime meeting, and usually, it's about a two-hour meeting, I think it's from about six to eight, um, and so people come and work on the plan, and so I, I think it's like a boxed sandwich, I, I don't know the actual menu, but I think it's something like that, just, uh, to help cater to the constituents. There's about eight to ten, I would say that come consistently, that number maybe more or less, but when the big public meeting happens, and then you experience this at North Heights, I know you've been there, there were over a hundred people, expect the same, so those, those kind of things.
I'm just thinking at the party, I do, they, they have food, snacks for everybody, water.
No. But, but the amount, the hundred and forty-five, um, you know, certainly a large share of that is still left to really potentially do the grant match, or how are they still gonna use those dollars? And we may be to a point, Commissioner, that we have AJ come give an update, you know, we may certainly be at that point, I know they're nearing, uh, one of the final phases for the second plan, and so that, she had that earmarked, to, they usually come and give us an update, so, when we meet, or next time, I can certainly ask her to do that.
Why can't the other one?
Yeah.
I, I'm on several boards, and I've never, do I eat meals? We gotta eat sometime, all late before the meeting?
Yeah.
As far as I'm concerned.
I, I don't know, I mean.
I just don't like that, I do supply.
Yeah, I agree. And I don't know about the city, I know the LGC, we meet at eleven-thirty till about two, two-thirty sometimes, and they have boxed lunches there too, but my very first meeting, I thought, oh, thanks for the, yeah, that was the very first thing. I agree, I hear you.
Okay, number twenty-four, chiller maintenance, to consider an act upon approving an agreement for chiller maintenance, County Courthouse, TV Industries, in the amount of nine thousand eighty-two dollars, or National IPA number R one five zero five oh one dash T H dash one five one six oh. This is something we do every year, same people, yes, it's just a different location.
It, it's, it's the same, same company, it's already done it, they come in four times a year.
And you're happy with them?
I'm happy with them.
Are you happy with mine?
He wouldn't be letting me talk right now. He also wanted me to say that we would like one served.
I was just thinking about it.
Here we go, being a little long, we might have.
Maybe it's gonna be a real, the struggle is real, it's, okay, uh, have a motion.
Court approved the room for chiller maintenance, County Courthouse, TV Industries, in the amount of nine thousand eighty-two dollars.
I have a motion, and a second, on favor, if I can. Five, zero, thank you very much. Number twenty-five, Hazmat Trailer, to consider an act upon approving the purchase of a replacement cargo trailer for fire rescue, the youngest trailer salesman, in the amount of eleven thousand four hundred and five, and to approve a transfer of funds from non-capital account to capital equipment.
Hi, our trailer has given up.
Has it?
We already put that in the budget transfers. No, we did not, okay.
So we're gonna transfer some, some money out to capital, you can go there.
What did you have at non-capital that is gonna be compromised by a result of this transfer?
Our non-capital equipment is for hazmat and rescue equipment, and we're not buying any rescue equipment this year, we're gonna replace that trailer, 'cause we, it's going to fall apart on the highway, obviously, we can't.
Um, how, so you're not replacing hazmat equipment to fix the trailer?
We're going to take the equipment we have to put in the trailer. We'll get that equipment next year. Ev- every year, it's a compromise as to what are we going to give up, as to what does we absolutely have. It's not like we have a plan that we can buy a hazmat or extrication equipment every year. We just have to look and see where our need is and put money there. The trailer is a nineteen sixty-nine model and it literally is falling apart, so.
Richard, did you know that you're going to keep that nineteen sixty-nine trailer?
No. No, it's going to auction if it makes.
Okay, I see where you're going with that.
Got any more questions to approve? But I'd make a motion to approve a replacement cargo trailer for fire rescue with youngest trailer sales in, in the amount of eleven thousand four hundred five dollars. And to approve a transfer of funds from non-capital account to the capital account. Second.
Can you have a motion in a second, I'll favor raise your hand. Five zero, thank you for sharing. Number twenty-six, replacement SCBA to consider enacted upon approving the purchase of Avon Delta Air SCBA forty-five hundred PSI cylinder for the fire rescue and breathing air systems in the amount of eight thousand five hundred seventy dollars. And to approve transfer of funds in awards recognition account to capital account. Okay.
This is the air pack that was stolen and uh, I said that we would make that work out of our budget. We're transferring money from what we have available to be able to cover the cost of the damage.
Was this the truck that was in two young?
Yes. This is the only piece of equipment that wasn't recovered. I move that uh, the approved purchase of the uh Delta Air SCBA forty-five hundred PSI cylinder for fire, for fire rescue. With, and then breathing air systems in the amount of eight thousand five hundred seventy dollars. And to approve transfer of funds for awards and recognition's account to capital.
Okay, I'm rushing you a second, I'll favor raise your hand.
Thank you.
Do you have any idea what, what may have happened to that? Be approved, we have made a session.
No, you'll find it probably in a oil field somewhere, somebody using it did this. Limited confined space entry. We found somewhere air masks in uh unquestionable shops that they use. Masks that they make them into and they'll literally steal them off trucks. So it is something that seems to be a lot more current.
Okay, um, I'm going to skip twenty-seven, but twenty-eight, the vast consideration act from the ball of performance from the bridge, the form of the bottom Campbell and Summer Bowler, President of the Board of directors. July first, cruising accident, COVID shape, and Summer Bowler, making office fifteen. Elections and change in the form of Monica Almendorf, Monica, and we have that just from the yard beginning of August sixteen. And for this name, this deployment of Coe David Dan has bounced people one. And we're fighting the Stewart, thank you all for this.
Make a motion that we approve the implemented items as presented.
Sir.
Make a motion in a second, I'll favor raise your hand. Before we go to budget, whoa, just to count the charges. Got anything we can call back? Jail count today is five sixty-six, we got eighty-nine, five mils, zero, eight childrens. Eighty-seven percent of those people in jail, adults, the over ten percent are on these charges. Coming down, any at all here? Just the, the.
Thirty-one, one come in.
Okay, any insurance items?
Yeah, the only thing I was going to add to Richard's line, I am going to, uh, SBA, I am going to do, I already did all claim the insurance. I want to get along with that, see if we can get some insurance. And so we will.
Okay.
I'll tell all of the free person. But at this point, I don't have a stat, so I would, you know, like this. Purchasing agent, it was covered, it was our control.
Okay, what was that, research agenda items for next time?
Could I just explain that surprise that we got this last week? She used to call from a lady in Bushland and she asked what we were going to do about our park in Bushland. And I said, we don't know the park. The only property we own is a fire station. And uh, I'm drunk. We own.
I like saying yours.
We own a lot that uh was granted to us by Carolyn Bush Amoney back in nineteen eighty-one for to use as, as a park. It has playground equipment on it, picnic tables. Someone's been going in. But anyway, I was surprised and I don't know what, if we have any liability, insurance on it or any kind of insurance on this thing, uh, somebody falls off of that. Some of that equipment.
So how was it, how was it? Was it the fishnet or?
Yeah, it's a deep, I want the deep right here. Hey.
Anyway. I guess I will, Chad and I are going to be talking about this in the bar. There's a group in uh, Bushland wants to meet and see if there's anything to be done. Their ideas, they always play, I know this stuff, but I don't think they're that. But anyway, we need to, to talk to them and find out exactly what, what it is. And I don't know, we may want to try to, I don't know what we want to do. But the uh, I just wanted to let you know, this was brought to my attention later last week. I was surprised.
I think we're still digging through some Commissioner's court stuff too. I think there may be some, there were some additional. So we can confirm if we own it first before we? Yeah, we would have had to go through Commissioner's court, so we, we.
Evidently we own it because there's.
Yeah, that's, that's the deed that's in the land records. But a lot of times whenever things get transferred, like whenever y'all do that and we record it uh over in the land records. And this, what we were looking at was like back in ninety-one or something like that.
The Brad is still, I mean, Brad.
Right, and they would get that information from whoever was doing the Commissioner's court stuff at the time, from them recording it in the land record. So, but the stuff we got to looking at, it's, it's kind of messed up, so.
The uh, what I should gather from some of the folks around there that the, the equipment may have been donated in the name of someone's daughter that was killed or passed away and uh, that person's moved out of town. So who's, who's been going a lot, I, it's a interesting thing. But anyway, I'm trying to bring Brad to work for this.
Um, before we go to the, to the budget item, can you, is there any way you can put in that change that we made? And, and can you send that to me? We go through the network as for everybody for, you take a five-minute break.
Sure.
Okay, the, the insurance change that we just made today. We could save on the screen, I remember that's fine.
We can.
Don't matter what, you have a five-minute break. Okay, ready? Okay, number twenty-seven, budget process going here, twenty eighteen, we discuss the progress this year. And technically, if necessary. And then to announce Monday, August twenty-eighth, twenty seventeen, and having MSDA first public. Okay, where we left off last was. County covering, but shortage on the insurance. Right? No. No call. And keeping the uh, effective tax rate the same, is that right? The very same and only the people who we can see increase, the people that are increasing their probability of. Tax rate.
Tax rate.
Tax rate.
Tax, okay, tax rate. Now, let's change a little bit.
Can I do that?
Yes.
I'll do second. Um, we have changed a couple of things since then because of several things that have happened. And uh, in the last two weeks, three weeks, in terms of, okay, do I do a deal? Uh, in the budget process, every year we're supposed to have our records management, um. Records management plan approved. Anyway, so I wanted to tell you where we are on records management. Uh, I guess we have a lot of things that have changed this year. We have, what are, what we have been doing in the district clerk's office is all of our documents since nineteen to two thousand four have been imaged in a standalone system called Versa Image, which was not uh attached to our case management system. Now with the initiation of OTC, uh, part of this contract uh was that all our images, and there were over a million images, were um, con, um, integrated, changed because our images are TIF, they changed them to PDF. Then they had to attach them to every event that uh we had and it took, it took months. The last thing in uh, OTC conversion that happened. And with that, um, it's all on our server here instead of a, that's the end. In the OTC system. And through that, I am giving thirty thousand dollars from my records management account to be utilized for uh, uh, OTC maintenance costs.
Yes, that's it. Okay, here, I wonder, does this do anything to the bottom line?
Just sorry. Yeah, you all just have to approve them, approve them.
But it's not an agenda.
I've sent it over, it's an agenda item and I said that we could do it in the budget.
Okay, I just didn't know if it was appropriate to take action without a, usually it's a separate agenda item since before.
Yeah, I've sent it over earlier last week. I said, should it be, you know, Commissioner's court, they said, don't just do it in the budget process, so.
Done.
Well, um, if there's any need to have approved today.
It just has to be approved during the budget process, like if you approve.
Well, it's approved.
Okay.
I think we can just make this part of our report.
Okay.
Thank you, Carolyn, you're welcome. Okay, um, okay, so what I, I was saying, since the last time we did uh, completely you had the district judges raise uh the salaries of the, of the purchasing agent in their office and author their offices and the um, the years? They did them raises in Peru, Terry, Terry Rose, and also, you know, the issue. Um, insurance committee made changes to the benefits and then now they made changes to that change. And then there's always the, the revenue cap thing that we don't know about. It will, we may know today, but if they, if the legislative bodies in Austin change this for us to six percent or less, um.
They approved it at a s- at six percent on Saturday, but they have a third reading.
Uh, this is just tonight, it's going to be tonight. Now, some counties are even talking about changing to four percent, some of the smaller counties. It's going to kill us, it's absolutely going to kill us. And certainly smaller counties are, are really, really going to suffer. Uh, we're going to suffer enough at six percent. I would hate to think that I would ever have to raise taxes six percent or more. But um, so let's keep that in mind as we discuss this today. So, on the screen is the change that we made today. So this is seven B two.
So what are you, what are you proposing, what rate? I mean, I know we have lots of options here. Where, where are we, where's our current? Uh, I don't follow, I don't know. Okay, yes, thank you, I'm following. Okay, so we started at the end of July, that was negative six hundred, it's a change, six twenty-five. Under the desk. Seven sixteen. Yeah, she was first from here. So when we ended budget, the end of July, we had a deficit of seven sixteen at the current range, right there. And then now with the changes that we have made, so we took part of the recommendation, which was good. Right, we stayed with some money. We're at uh, a deficit of one hundred and sixty-nine. Right, okay.
And then, then on top of that, we've made these changes also, everybody. That was just some changes that we made during, uh, after I met with Perry and, and people called and said, hey, we take FPIs testing out, won't do that anymore, blah, blah, blah. And all the stuff that we, we put back in, I'll figure out.
Okay.
Okay? Here, uh, Leanne, did you want to speak? I see you looking at me.
No, no, I, I mean, whatever's convenient, but I, I just, thank you, um, first of all, for considering employees with the insurance and making that adjustments. I know this is really hard, but I do want to speak in behalf of the employees to ask for a two percent COLA. Um, I know other areas will be receiving that. And um, just considering the fact that another judge mentioned this in Commissioner's court this morning that um, with the insurance increasing each year, the, the raises they've gotten have basically just covered that expense, which was wonderful that you guys considered that. But there really hasn't been an increase to their salary brought home in quite some time. And um, I mean, I just consider the groceries, the insurance costs, everything has so increased. And as Carolyn brought out, our employees that have such a small salary, this is, it's really, really hard and the struggles have been hard. So I just wanted to ask you to please consider a two percent raise for the rest of the employees as well. And um, thank you that, I mean, with you, including the insurance costs this year, this would actually be a raise to their checks. So um, please consider that two percent for the rest of the employees as well.
Because hypothetically, uh, we look at uh, where we are right now, where, what's the?
You know, if you're a sexist.
We'd have to raise taxes four point nine percent to just get it back in the four hundred thousand range. Right, Karen? Sheriff?
I mean, yeah, I mean, it's tough, but I just kinda wanted to touch on the elderly, I mean, employees is, is important. I know, I know, you understand that, and I just really like to throw that out there. Our, our, our division is, is already getting hit because the city's gonna increase just the police department salary by three point seven percent, and that just throws that industry that much higher and throw a bit of weight to nowhere out now, so, um, just kinda throwing that out there. I, I, you know, after looking at that, I go, well, I think I'm just gonna sit down, because, I mean, I understand, I do, but, so, I mean, always a very important thing. And I know you.
And just, and just wanting to figure that out.
The average salary.
Yeah, and I have the two percent there with the average on the hand, if persons of rights did not change, with that four point nine seven percent annual increase of eighty dollars and eighty-two cents, we're much greater than thirty-seven percent. On the average, um...
Seventy, is it, is it, sorry, seventy-four cents?
Seventy-four cents.
Um, um. Carolyn, I have a very, um, interesting proposal, we'll find out slings and arrows coming up here. But what if we had a two percent for employees that had under fifty thousand, one percent for employees over that, and no percent raise for elected officials?
I don't, if you're in slings and arrows, you don't? I, I'm just taking through the accounting, like, maintained.
Is that a headache? You couldn't just check it over there? Oh, no, you can do that, I'm here.
We, we have done that before, uh, two years, but we haven't done it.
So, you're proposing two percent for people thirty thousand and under. One percent for people over fifty. And zero for elected officials.
And I can remember, uh, suggestion that the elected official could not get a raise, and the employees did, and I was told at the time that that was not possible, you had to give the raise to them.
It's, it's not that it's not possible, it's just a, a, a headache. Random county did it a couple of years ago, they didn't give elected officials raises. They do get a random one.
I think that's an option.
I wonder how, how we could figure.
I would be in agreement with that.
He would?
Yes, ma'am.
He would be. Okay, okay, best job amongst yourselves. So, anybody, anybody here that does not agree with that, any elected official that does not agree with that? So, this applied, it's been department heads also, they would not get, or they would?
They'd give the one percent, they'd be over fifty. It's based on salary range, not the title.
I have a thought too, this is something that another entity has done before, that we're seeing them work very well, instead of doing, like what Carolyn said, maybe doing just, um, a lump payment, you know, just a dollar amount, that's, I've seen that. You know, first the, just department heads, um, that this would be a little bit different because your tables are different, but at that time, the administrator did not get.
You know, we, we talked about the little, that's one of those stopping, you know, self, you know, and trying to start by, one of them says, two, employees that make less in certain way, that might be, be opposed to that. My question is, should we possibly make more than that? So, that's what, those, those people are concerned about, and I'm still, I'm also concerned about, please, let's, maybe look at a, an amount that employees make, you know, if they're above a certain amount, then you get to it.
So, you're, you're suggesting similar to what Carolyn did, but nothing kind of over the, let's just say fifty for the discussion.
Forget about, yeah, forget about the fifty, just, of course, employees making less than whatever, we decided it's an amount that should get raised.
If I could say one thing about that.
Just one thing.
Just one thing, if you would, just be careful about that amount percentage, because in two thousand six, my employees were actually making more money than I would say some department head. We had to come in and fix that.
Yeah, there seems to be a lot of tracing that needs to be done in salary range, in a lot of areas. Thanks, Richard.
And he just said to one thing, yeah. And then, he starts with one thing.
So, you're saying anybody that's fifty thousand or whatever?
I don't know the figures, I'm just saying that there are some employees that they need help, that are, that, that would be, I might have, but he said fifty thousand, that's, uh, uh, a big, a large thing.
I'm just saying, not giving anything, make fifty thousand, I'm a employee here, never did. Times are different.
Both bread, I'm sure, you know.
The only problem I see with you setting the, the salary like that, is some of those that are making more have more responsibilities. And I know in my office, that would create some major morale issues. If the lower end without those responsibilities, they're getting that raise, and they weren't.
Yeah.
That would create another set of issues.
Problem, well, maybe, maybe just throwing the idea out there.
But that's just, I can see that maybe, maybe the staggered rates would work, or better truly, at least those higher ends, we're getting a little bit. Or, or a set amount, because, you know, uh, somebody that's making fifty thousand dollars, if they give one percent, they're getting five, you know, five hundred. You don't have to give everybody that two percent, so that would take thirty thousand percent, they're gonna get.
Yeah, 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 she's saying like one lump sum, like, and, and I, I haven't been a member of the court since we did that, that is an interesting way to think about it, because as we build, we build on this here.
Yeah, every time the higher gets a two percent, it's a incrementally more because of what, yeah, so, anyway, just thinking. We used to have longevity too. Yeah. We did.
Yeah, we did, kind of front of the wall.
I probably already remember that.
Looking at this, uh, and, and looking to make sure, if we raise taxes this year, that help in the state, make sure that's what we want to have to. And, and, and if you were in worst of that, we, oh, great. Just blame it on the new stadium. Just blame it on the new stadium. Everyone better raise because of the new stadium.
Yeah, no.
Hey, they're gonna, they're gonna think.
Okay, Karen, yeah, keep in mind that these are very, I just did it as a whole, but, um, to give a two percent, the cost of the board is about six hundred and seventy thousand dollars. If you do the break at fifty, with two percent below, one percent above, it drops it by a hundred and fifty-six, well, a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars, which is what you can save by doing one percent to those.
That's not, uh... So, we have not counting y'all, not counting Bill, not counting the two, the two other species that y'all.
Of course, I think we have about five fifteen.
Five fifteen?
Right. There again, these are very rough numbers, um, but the cost of five hundred dollars per full-time employee, uh, for rated, uh, so for our time employees, uh, is about three hundred and seventeen thousand dollars.
You're counting. Well, yeah. I didn't include, oh, yes, benefits. So, three, three seventeen, so it's just like, yes.
And we're not seeing your screen, I don't know if you're sharing, you may not be. Okay, no, no, you, I didn't know your, you know, this is a favorite word. No, you're.
And then it costs, or the actual salaries, we put two fifty-seven, five, and then we have fifty-nine thousand, that's three percent.
Or we just don't do the COLA?
And how would you pay, if you did that, five hundred dollars, how would you pay that with a deed out throughout the year or one?
One time, just a one time, just one, one check that you're paying off. And that's typically what a lump sum is.
Maybe a separate check.
But still, I'm gonna be the one to argue against the COLA, because my people get the less, the ones that are, a lot more get a lot more percentage wise.
Yeah, because it's based on percentage of salary.
Yeah, and I argue that we have as much duties as a lot of other people in this county that we haven't done, um, salaries are very, so I would argue against it, I'd rather it be a lump sum raise. And then our people would at least get from thirty-three thousand to thirty-three five hundred.
Also across the board?
Yeah. I mean, that's still below, um...
It's not a one dime, that's a, that's next year, they'll still, they'll be getting some of that five hundred also, it's not just a one lump sum.
Well, I mean, it would grow, depending on what you wanna do next year, but, uh, like, my people make thirty-three thousand, uh, make, uh, trains deputies, they, if we get thirty-three and five hundred, you get thirty-three five hundred, and I know the sheriff's, uh, deputies make, uh, their clerks make thirty-five, they start at thirty-five, or they are at thirty-five now. Uh, you know, all across the board, um, there's disparity, and it grows and grows and grows. Five hundred dollars is not a whole lot of money, anyway.
But either way, back to your spreadsheet, um, Carrie, we have to discern, we started with, uh, four hundred in there, the dollar COLA, whether we're gonna raise taxes to do, either way, whether we do a lump sum, that's three hundred thousand, whatever that looks like, or a COLA, that's a two percent, a one percent, or either way, that takes us away from the existing tax rate. We, we would have to raise taxes, am I right? A little bit, we'd have to raise taxes to go to do that, however you slice it.
So, what if you play around with the COLA? And you look at, uh, one more time, yeah, can we lower the percentage, because it have to be a one, a two, and whatever.
It'll be one for after one, I mean, I mean, we... Yes, yeah, is it worth the, and that's where we started before the insurance recommendation.
Right, and that's four percent, so one percent is gonna be roughly about three hundred.
What do you say, Judge?
About one percent? Where are we, sorry?
That has four percent to go, at the current, where we started.
My own opinion is, I just don't think we can do the COLA this year, that's my opinion.
So, this, the, this top, top row is where we are right now, with one percent. Uh, and plus covering that hundred dollars, maybe, uh, this shortage on the, on, uh...
With one percent.
You're saying right. A little bit hard, where we started.
We started at seven sixteen.
Well, that's, uh, that's, that's fine.
But that does affect the amount that will not run in, will not roll into fund balance and our savings, and then if we have this revenue cap that we think may indeed happen in some form or fashion, there's gonna be telling us it's not gonna happen.
That's the revenue cap, it's what, what triggers the rollback election, it's not that you can't go back. Right, right, it's a six percent, if they roll it back, it's eight percent, they roll it back to six percent. Um, that means if we ever raise taxes, I'm like, next year, if this happens, we have to raise taxes. It's automatic rollback election, that costs about sixty-two thousand dollars for that election. Maybe if the tax, there used to tell us we should get raised taxes, and if they say no, which they will, we cut services. And that is, they have all very...
Remember, this is the one time they actually backed it.
I don't wanna do that again, no one wants to do that again, I can't figure out why, I would just like to body face, it's okay. But I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna. Hungry. Um, Karen, but this is the last thing I'll say. If you did a one percent, the people making sixty thousand dollars, you'd get six hundred dollars. You do a one percent for the thirty thousand, they get three hundred dollars, you know, what's the big difference in equ, uh, equaling it out and helping your lowest paid?
With the lump sum.
The lump sum?
Yeah, with, with a certain amount, yeah.
You're saying a lump sum, that means that they don't get the next year, whatever you give, you need to give, it needs to be a continuous thing, but that's, five hundred dollars this year, and next year, you get a decrease of it. Well, next year, you're looking at a different, uh, depending on who we are.
Different situation, depending.
Yeah, but you're, it's gonna be five hundred less than what you got this year.
But it would, it would be included there, it would show as sound.
Figure out a part of their base salary.
Yeah. Yeah.
That sounds like a bonus check. It's like a bonus check.
Yeah, yeah, you can't call it bonus, you can't use bonus.
No, you can't call it that, that's what he like, he like spare boots.
I don't know what, I believe the ramifications are on this, something like that. I have to have any...
Thank you.
Five hundred, yeah. Legally, I don't know, so, well, can't pay bonuses, we know that, uh, but you can, you can do prospective compensation. Just give you a bonus. Uh, we're giving you five hundred dollars, that is your special period employee. That should be tied to some sort of, uh, prospective compensation consideration. Otherwise, you're not filed for compensation through the Constitution.
That's what I was gonna say.
There you go, yeah, I just couldn't remember the exact article.
I know it's right on the tip.
Yeah, it was, it was.
Hey, Karen had an idea.
So, what are you, what you're saying is it has to be part of, become part of the base salary, correct? So, you're giving me a five hundred dollar, yeah, he's saying, yeah, it has to be part of the base salary. Next year, that's your salary, that's your base salary.
That's what, is that, is that, that's what I was gonna say, it has to, has to become part of your salary, I mean, it's almost like, uh, you can't just give, give that and not include on your income taxes, it's part of your salary, it goes into your base account.
Carrie's.
It's a one-time move. Could it not be included in your base and have it be, uh, extended our twenty-four paychecks that we get now? And I don't see a difference. Well, yeah, exactly, and that's what my people get every time.
Can you believe it, can you believe it?
No, that's the truth. If they have the two percent, they get six hundred dollars, uh, and that.
That's just a factor.
It is nothing.
Well, their spans, their spans are there for a reason, they've been putting theirs, like Richard said earlier, you need to, Carrie had an idea, she and I talked about the, the, the longevity pay where you did the five-year increments or, or in, in, in the ten-year, in the fifteen-year, whatever, than a yearly, I mean, I don't know what you came up with that, but I didn't mean to throw you under the bus, but you might, might speak to that, 'cause there, there was maybe some positive in that, it wouldn't cost as much as a, as a COLA raise, but I also think that everybody wants something, no matter what level you're at, if, if the sheriff says, hey, I'm not gonna take anything, I'll give up mine, and now the chief is closer to making what the sheriffs making, you need to leave those spans in there, they're there for a reason.
They're there for a reason.
Right.
That's a good, that's a good point.
Well, you know, there, people will argue against long-debt, but I believe that if you have people that are gonna keep working and you, and the department that keeps them employed, then just because they will, you know, however many years they put in ought to be worth something.
I believe.
How do, how did that happen, Carrie? When did they take that away, why?
Remember, they took away nineteen eighty-five, I do know that one.
I do, I know part of it. Part of it was, there were a lot of, uh, department heads that were arguing that they wanted to be able to give raises according to accomplishments, so that's where.
My daughter.
Very shit.
Yeah, there wasn't merit pay available because of the long debt. And, but if, if, not in an apartment where there's not so much, even, even merit pay, I mean, yeah, sometimes it's just.
You know, Carrie, you said, I'm gonna throw you under the bus, but you said, now you're saying two hundred bucks. You're saying that you wanna give certain people a raise, but then you also said, I wanna give everybody that makes thirty thousand the same amount, so which is it?
Well, because as the person is making higher than that, you're getting it every year extra.
You're not gonna give her that?
Uh, no, I wouldn't.
Everybody, everybody is.
Well, and I do, and if my people weren't the lowest in the whole county, I mean, I'd have looked.
You're so big, your people are low.
I know, I know, no, it was my idea, my clerks are less than your clerk.
I'm gonna tell you the. That's my highest, that's my highest. Well, I don't, I'm listening, but, okay, I'm being thrown under the bus, I do feel, I do feel that there needs to be a salary survey at some point and get things, uh, structured, because it is not.
Thank you, thank you. They also, they also drive thirty miles or twenty miles out there. They do?
Yeah, but still, that's, that's one of these.
That's not, not that that's worth it for a reason, that's something that they're doing actually.
But last year, they got a one percent, so it was three hundred dollars, right, that was a point, you know, we're trying that. Well, I'm just.
Don't like city officials getting very rough. I think, I think.
I think they're six hundred dollars. Would you like that you would have a discretion that you get? Yeah, no, I would disagree, I think there's all kinds of options that you, I mean, I don't. And take emotions. Take emotions. Me personally. I think to the, to the.
No.
The, probably. We had to focus, actually, we had a. I had the summer today. Because within the next three days.
For a point that I have up in now, is we're gonna talk in the past, it's only beginning to break down, uh, the college, now, we're just getting creeps. Interested in that, but most of our real property, forty-six percent of their properties did not have a change.
Okay. So that means if we keep this current range, they will experience no impact on that.
Correct. See your local levels, three-two percent of no change, oil, gas, three-one percent of no change.
Go back down to Carrie and look and see what, um, how many states say it and none of you will increase. Forty-eight percent will increase.
It would need to have a.
I was asked this question this last week, and I wasn't sure. Fun, sixty, people sixty-five and over, their tax rate is frozen, not the value.
Correct. Sure, their taxes are frozen.
Totally, taxes are frozen, so if, if evaluation closes up, their taxes could move up.
No, their taxes will not go up unless it may improve.
Okay.
That's for over sixty-five, and those that have filed, have filed disability, and we have bought a few out there that have filed disability as well, it's not just the over sixty-five.
So they're frozen.
And we're seeing increases, hundred percent veterans, I'm just gonna throw that out there, they don't pay you.
Veterans don't?
They're a hundred percent disabled. And that's as it should be. Okay.
Yes, sir.
When the taxes, the taxes that were gathered by the county last year is what the tax rate, if we tax the same thing, it doesn't matter. If we made, if the tax, the county got in a million dollars last year, then it doesn't matter if they raise values, anything else that goes on, if we're gonna tax more than a million dollars this year, then we have to raise taxes, correct?
Wow. To catch the effective tax rate you're talking about, to, to bring in the same amount of dollars that we did last year, that's what they call the effective tax rate. Now, the effective tax rate is lower than the actual tax rate that we, that we, uh, charged last year.
But the effective tax rate is, correct, so actually, the effect, the tax rate that I'm gonna pay on my property this year, if you leave the tax, if you should keep the effective tax rate the same, would be less than what I paid last year. If my prop, if my property pay is held this year, I want an equivalent that they did.
So it should be the same for you.
So, I understand, I don't have to get re-elected, I don't have to stand up to take people's guff for raising taxes. But the county doesn't get the benefit from the inflation of the land. People think we do, but we don't, but the county doesn't. So when you continue to not raise taxes to keep up with inflation, then therefore, at some point, services have gotta start going down. And the county's pretty, is pretty tight on the services that we offer. Uh, the departments that I'm well familiar with, I know we're, we're working at the bare minimum that we can do, and I feel like the others, the others are the same way, I don't think anybody in the county wastes money. So speaking as a citizen, the county's got to raise taxes, basically every year, two, three percent, just because inflation goes up, if you can't add any new services, if you're raising taxes exactly what inflation is, next year you can't raise, you cannot add any services to what we're doing to do any more for the citizens than what we were doing last year.
That's why the concept that, that you raise commission, uh, is interesting. But on the long one end, to actually raise taxes to percent without any COLA. But then you get the, and the national team from, uh, deployed and, and rightly so, that they don't have anything to keep up with inflation.
And but what I think makes this budget cycle so different is, we're not having this conversation to say, do we cut services or do we, uh, to raise taxes or not? I, I, for our budget and what's in there and the number of new positions and the insurance, this is a very aggressive budget, this is the most staffing we've absorbed in one year. Like, this is an aggressive budget, so we're at a point where we're at break-even without raising taxes and no COLA. We're not cutting services, we're expanding services, expanding FTEs, your positions under that umbrella without raising taxes. Can that happen every year? Absolutely not. I think it's a miracle, actually, that we're at this point. So that means department heads are spending wisely, um, they're underspending so that we can have this healthy budget. But what, what makes this different is, we're not talking about today, do we cut services or not, do we raise taxes, yes or no, all the services are built in, there's nothing that I can think of that was cut from services. We're talking about do we raise taxes for the COLA or not. That's very, that's a different conversation versus services.
And I'm not arguing to raise taxes, I'm just making a point.
No, yeah, that's a very fair.
I related to my own budget, and tax, when pay gap stays consistent.
Yeah.
Year after year after year, and I disagree with the inflation rates that they're putting out, 'cause I think they're higher. I think I'm actually paying more for what I do than is more per year than what's going on, but I see the budget in my household not keeping up, and the county's the same, I'm relating to the same.
Yeah, it is the same concept, you're right.
I was gonna say that the county is an exceptional job, or, you start looking at some other industry, and they not only have a firing or not hiring, and they're cutting their hours to where they don't have to pay their insurance. I've seen that happen throughout this country, this county is not doing it. So, uh, my, my part of belief is that we, we leave the health insurance as it is, no COLA, and we have to raise taxes a little bit more than we're raising. But not, not to make a choice.
And we're, to, to expand on that, Commissioner, we're feeling that locally, the city just a week ago today cut six employees and their IT position, so you don't.
Yeah, but they're hiring, they're hiring civil police officers.
Yeah, yes, I, I'm not saying that, I'm just, it comes down to the budget and for other positions, and a lot of times what happens, and this happens in the private industry too, is they cut from the top, right? Their management level, those are your higher level employees or your supervisors, because you get that savings, but back to your point, we have been, we're not having those conversations.
Okay, the figures we have here on our screen, is that included one percent COLA?
Can we see it without it? And the top is our current rate, and we started this with negative seven sixteen.
I'm gonna move that, uh, we incorporate a one percent COLA. And maintain the current changes out of the bill, and. Starting, uh, with.
One percent COLA, and changes made on the charts. One percent COLA is across the board.
And that number again, Carrie, would be seven seventeen.
And that, not raise taxes?
No.
Or not? Cause it shows no.
I don't know what his motion is, is his motion to keep the rate the same, or is your motion to increase? That top line is to keep the rate the same.
Right, Carrie.
Right, seven percent to three thousand.
If you went to four and a half percent, you'd increase the, uh, lessen the same. Then, you talk four and a half percent, it sounds terrible, it's really increasing, lessen it, on same.
On same, yeah.
Well, it's for discussion, my voice is on the floor, so.
Okay, you have a motion, uh, Commissioner Vaughn, for. Can you bring the tax rate the same as it, as it is currently, uh, making the changes on the insurance, the insurance, uh, that we did today, but on today, and one percent cost of living adjustment across the board. All right, the second. Uh, the second.
Do you say?
So do I have the second?
I'll say it for discussion.
Okay. Okay.
I wanna get off the desk.
Okay.
So. That actually does not, uh, raise back.
That's not the correct way.
It does raise. That was a little confusing when we were talking.
Now, we have to figure what, what the tax rate is of the effective tax rate, that's what they're raising. Effective tax rate brings in more money than it did last year. Yeah, it brings in the same. It's so hard to explain, okay, the effective tax rate, all that means is it brings in the same amount of money we did last year. Okay, if we look at the tax rate, the total tax rate from last year is seven point six six four oh two, that brings in more money. So that's what they're considering, the three point five two percent increase.
If you did not do any kind of a tax increase, if you will, with the effective tax rate, you'd have two point four billion deficits. That's, no increase.
But by keeping it the same, Commissioner, you can leverage, um, for the people that their value of their home didn't go up, their impact will be zero, i- in terms of the increase. So if your home didn't go up in value, you'd pay the same thing you did last year.
Like forty-eight percent of home.
Mm-hmm, not forty-eight percent.
That's what we did last year.
Very same thing, we did not raise the tax rate.
We do it two years in a row, it's like passive. We have to raise taxes eventually. I just don't know. We have to, we have to.
And if you wanted to add two positions, it doesn't happen on the next year's.
Uh, so that was the model that I suggested, Commissioner, was if you don't do a COLA and you raise a little bit. That will get our balance, our, our deficit in a healthier state that we can absorb. And you're not jumping so, so big of a jump potentially from, for next year. You're not going to the six or whatever the amount is, you know, that you might be going to by the state. Um, which is a different philosophy for sure, but.
And I see where you were going, Commissioner Vaughn. You wanted to raise them this year in case we don't get the chance next year because of the revenue cap. But at the same time, you're raising them only to give a COLA. I mean, that's what it looks like.
Yeah.
That you're raising them just to give, just to give a solid increase.
But actually, you could look at it a different way. You did add two positions, which is six hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars.
Yeah.
A two percent raise is six hundred and seven. So only you're raising taxes to extend.
To offset the personnel, yeah.
I think it always, it just makes it hard because we always talk about the total at the end. And that's not the, I'm not saying that the right way. It's just you're trying to discern all the pieces in the middle. So that's what you can not. Is that, did you raise? Yes, no?
So.
Well, but we were raising it to cover the cost of the new, of the new positions. And insurance, insurance, we know.
It's just hard when you see the numbers and that you don't have to raise and you're still able to do all those things. And you throw in the COLA, it's like, well, but I agree with you. You can look at it different ways. It's just hard when you see the numbers to say, well, we could have done it.
I think if we, if we're going to agree up to one percent COLA. We need to look at a total tax rate of four point six. With a less than a one cent. Just on, it just depends on how you try to sell this program. Because it's really, it's less than one cent for a hundred thousand dollar value or one dollar. One dollar.
So you're saying, Commissioner Church, to keep the one percent in, that then you raise the four point five one percent over the effective.
I think if that's, if that's how we want to go, one percent COLA. Isn't this why it's about to do something like this? Raise taxes enough so our deficit isn't so huge.
I don't know that we're all in agreement on a one percent.
That's pretty gross. That's what's on the table.
Yeah.
That is the motion.
Yeah, we also have a motion.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second on a one percent COLA.
Now, that's what, leaving the rate, effective rate, but that poses an, um, discussion. But I'm only talking about one percent raise first.
We need to finish.
Yeah, I think probably I'll finish what you have on the board.
Okay, what? Okay.
I can do that, but I, I like the, uh, the rate, but let's go back to that.
Okay.
I, I wouldn't, but, you know, taking my motion back, I would, I would discuss it on that.
So a motion is on the table and a second. So we have to, we have to vote on that, correct?
I think I, I believe that. I think I believe that.
He can receive it. Okay, but we're all, yeah, seven things percent.
Correct, yes. Are you drawing your motion?
But.
Completely.
For more, other discussion, I'll draw it.
Okay, okay. So motion has been withdrawn. Okay. Question remains, do we raise taxes four point five one percent to cover the shortages in insurance and cover your employees? And at the same time, do you have a COLA?
Is that a motion objection?
Nope.
You did that so well. You come up pretty good. Now, I'll make, you know, I mean, one percent.
I guess, I, I would really, you know, but here's, here's my bottom line, and I'm not pointing at you, Carrie, or you thinking, or the, the probation. Y'all and the district judges go up two percent, I don't know that. And I hate looking at the other, other four hundred and eighty employees and telling them that you're not worthy because they are. They're not part, some are, but they're not worth it. They're not worthy. I hate to just go one percent because it really is a step in the way.
In the past, in past years, the district, uh, they did it all.
Yes, they did. And this year they did not.
Do you want to see it in words with two tenths, Judge, based on your comments?
Based on my comments, cannot see, please see the numbers with the two percent. Dr, Dr. Wolf.
It's about a two hundred thousand dollar impact, two, two fifteen, two sixteen decision. But I think, Commissioner Church, you were looking at the four point five one, one Adam. That rule is what you were looking at. Instead of four hundred, three seven, three six.
So we just, do we stay at another still? This is the question. Do we stay at the four point five? Do we go to four point nine and get it under the five hundred thousand range and up for taxes about thirty cents?
Would you comfortable in that?
In her, oh, I'd love to see no deficit. We could have sold it, but. Depending on how, how you scale this year, you know, we had a six hundred thousand, we were down to two hundred fifty. Many years off that, it, it catches. But right now, we're in good shape.
I, I just, uh, I'm sorry, I just don't think it's the years for a COLA for me personally. That's my opinion. I mean, I, I'm proud of this core and this, all of the department heads, everybody that's joined. What's in this budget is a very aggressive budget. Well, the, but the ins, the fact that we were able to absorb so much of the insurance, I think that's a huge win for employees. I feel like employees will see that. That was a huge win. I don't know, I may be mistaken. I'll look to you guys. I mean, you're closest to it. Well, yeah, I, that part of the process is very difficult.
I'm breaking the revenue. We have to, absolutely that revenue coming up too.
Yeah.
I think just to, just take a look at the insurance, this is, um, the prices of the last several years, first, what part of county is done. Second, everything employee only, employees bouncing, child, one little child and employee and family. So you can see that, um, the county has absorbed a lot of insurance.
And that's a, that's a part that's been about yourself, right? But then there are some new voices.
We got to make a decision here sometime. So I'm going to waffle a bunch. I came in here today.
You're making me hungry.
Yeah.
You say waffle.
I'll waffle on you. Now, the, um, I want, I will move. That we give a one percent COLA. And, uh, increase. The total tax rate to point six seven zero zero zero.
So it's a four point five? I have a motion. Uh, Commissioner Church to, uh, raise the tax rate, keep it, I mean, four point six seven by raising it on four point five one percent over the effective tax rate. One percent COLA. And a second.
A second.
Start the topic, yes. Do you, do you have to spill everything?
I'm sorry. I'm making arrangements in the, I need the two separate rates that we're adopting. I mean, I know you're adopting a total.
Okay.
But I need.
The M and L would be point six-two-seven-seven-three. I and S is point zero-four-two-two-seven.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion? There's no discussion. All in favor, if you can. Opposed. Taxes three to two. I'm not crazy, I need. Okay. Uh, no, I think, is that all we need here?
Kind of announced the public hearing on the bench.
Yes. Yeah, I did announce that. So we will have, I did announce that we'll, we'll have our first public meeting on this, on this budget on the morning of next meeting, forty-eight hours. All right, we're, we're scheduled Monday, October, the, uh, public meeting, second public meeting, December thirty-seven.
Do we need to include that?
Oh, yeah. Carol Mons, Carol Mons Field, we need to, we need to vote again. Are you having a motion or just saying we're having a call?
Like a little motion. Second motion.
It's like a little motion.
Not part of it. We're going to need a second. Yeah, y'all already voted on that.
Oh, there's a.
Sorry, we can't go back. I'll do it to close the meeting. I make a motion that we approve the power of Congress's reservation restoration in our high plan for twenty seventeen. As presented by the district attorney.
That they've got something to do with. Okay, motion and a second. Name on the favor, if you can.
Thank you.